You're joining us live for the City of South Fulton City Council Meeting. Introducing Mayor Khalid. District One Councilwoman, Dr. Catherine Raul. District Two Councilwoman, Carmelita Gums. District Three Councilwoman, Helen Zenobia Willis. District Four Councilman, J.C. Sebastian. District Five Councilwoman, Kiyosha B. Bell. District Six Councilwoman, Natasha Williams Brown. District Seven Councilwoman, Linda Pritchett. City Attorney, Sarah Kelly. City Clerk, Corey Adams. And City Manager, Sharon D. Subedan. A city on the rise.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the City of South Fulton's Wednesday, March 19th City Council Meetings. We do normally meet on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month, but to accommodate City Council's travels, we are meeting on this third Wednesday. We will return to our regularly scheduled second and fourth Tuesday meetings next Tuesday, March 25th. But whenever we meet, you can always join us here in our new City Council Chambers at 5440 Fulton Industrial Boulevard, 30336, or online at youtube.com/cityofsouthfulton. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council and the public at large. This is a roll call for the March 19th Work Session. The Honorable Catherine F. Ryle, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Kiyosha B. Bell, District Five.
Present.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six, will be here shortly. And the Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
And the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, please sound the first item.
First item on tonight's work session agenda is a City Manager Monthly Report presented by our City Manager, Sharon D. Subedan.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to start my report with an introduction of some of our new employees, if you will stand to be recognized. I'd like to introduce in person Anisha Nicholas, who is our new Grants Director. Welcoming back Samuel James, paralegal in the legal office. Oh, he gets a clap. Kimberly Johnson, our new administrative coordinator in the legal department. Christopher Marquez, our Police Fleet Manager. Welcome. Maurice Parker, General Services Health, Safety and Compliance Manager. Gibson Phillips, our Fleet Maintenance Manager, regular fleet. And Barbara Sanon, Public Affairs Senior Communications Manager. Barbara here? Okay. Thank you for acknowledging our newest additions to the team. And I've submitted my report for your review in advance, along with the finance report. The finance report and detailed finance report are back this month. As I shared with you, there'll be 30 days in arrears going forward to make sure we capture all of our year-end, month-end transactions. So it's included in addition to the very detailed report on Mayor and Council as required by the Charter. So any questions for me on the City Manager's report?
All right, well, first, I am going to take a privilege to say thank you. Welcome to all of our new employees. You are very much needed. Is everyone able to get into the queue? All right, seeing and hearing no objections, I will begin with Mayor Potem Pritchett.
Thank you for acknowledging me, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Subedan, in the transportation section, I don't see an update related to, I think it's called the Broadnaxx Bridge, which is the bridge project. Well, it might not be a T-SLOSS, but it's a bridge project for Oakley Township that has federal funding attached to it. And there were some right-of-way acquisitions.
I will have to look that one up and get back with you on that. If I find it before the end of the meeting, I'll give you a report on it.
Thank you. Oh, one more thing. Also, there's that, and then the other update is on this proposed, well, this roundabout that will take place on Jonesboro Road, Highway 138.
That one, I think, is in there. I'll look through. We have them by project number. I'll look through and give you an update on that.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gums.
Thank you for recognizing me, and thank you for the report, City Manager. I just have a quick question. It was very thorough. My question is in reference to the traffic calming program. So we know that all of the rumblings that are happening at the state in reference to the speed cameras. And I want to know, have we kind of prepared because of some of the funding, and you kind of talked about it a little bit last night? But as a city, we know that that is revenue that comes in to help us with traffic calming measures. Are we thinking about how we will, I guess, fund those type of projects if this does go away?
Sure. So we, over time, have accumulated a pretty decent reserve. What we are finding is our projects are actually coming in under $100,000 a piece, sometimes well under $100,000 a piece. So we have an accumulated reserve in that fund, and at this point, we think it's going to be very sufficient to continue our projects. We don't see anything in our immediate future that would jeopardize our traffic calming project program. We certainly can give you the exact amount that we have and how we're trending. I did see an update to the traffic calming report today, so we will forward that out to you as well, so you can kind of get a sense of what projects are in the pipeline. But at this point, we feel pretty comfortable and confident, and I have been in touch with our lobbyist about this issue very specifically as it relates to funding for transportation, pedestrian safety improvements. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, could I respond to an early question? Thank you. Councilwoman Pritchett, the Jonesboro Road project is P-10019841. It is under the Federal and State Project Section. It's the second one in your report. And let's see, is it? It's the multi-lane roundabout, GDOT. It's a safety project. It's expected to be 3.4 million. The project is expected to start at this point in fall of '27. If you remember, we've been pressing GDOT on this one to see if we can get it moved up, but that's where it is at this time. And let's see. The other one project for the Broadmax Bridge is Project T-280. And I'll find it and tell you where it is in the report and give an update on that one, but both of them are in the report. So T-280 is right underneath, it's under the number four, Construction Projects. So that one is, has a delayed start, but it has moved forward through all the phases. And so if you're looking for it in your report, it's under Construction Projects, and it's the second item, T-280, Oakley Road over Broadnaxx, Broadnaxx Creek Bridge Replacement.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
Release. Thank you. Is, do you have a report that captures our film and fees, permits, film and permit fees?
We don't have it in my report, but it is something we can pull out of Sages.
Is there any way we can start getting that and also a detail on where the filming fee is being collected from? I was told that some kind of way, people are going through the, and I'm not accusing anybody for anything, but I just need you to check into it, that people are going through the Chamber of Commerce for filming, and filming is taking place in our area. Now, I don't know the logistics. I don't know how that's working, but if you can check into that, and then I also want to know, year-to-date, how many, you know, the permits that have come in, how much we've collected.
Sure, we can get that out to you.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Subedan, I know this is probably not in the report, but I did want to ask if you did get an update on the roundabout at City Grove, the new timetable for finishing. I know we issued the timetable for reopening of Rivetown Road, but I think the public has it confused that the reopening of Rivetown Road would signal the finishing of the project, which I know is not the case. So I said in my email earlier today, if you don't have an update, it's fine, but I just wanted to mention that that's a concern in the community.
Sure, we'll put something out with clarification. I am a little concerned about weather delays. They're very optimistic on the program, on the project, but I'm a little concerned about weather delays and final punch list issues. So at this point, I think we're estimating it will be done before June.
Thank you.
The Chair recognizes Dr. R.
Thank you. Great report. Just a request, on page 38, we have nuisance and abatement cases, and it shows that none are coming through the system. Is it possible to see what cases are pending and where they are for nuisance abatement across the city?
Yes, we can do that.
And I would just like to chime in on that. We have a pretty extensive calendar coming up for April, so probably 15, 16 cases.
All right, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a quick question regarding the report, CM. I know we spoke about the lighting at Burdette. Is that included in this report? The request for lighting at Burdette Park in that area?
You're gonna have to refresh my memory. Is it in the park itself? Outside the park? I'm gonna have to go back and check.
Thank you.
All right, two quick questions. Now, we all have questions today. The, but this is really more so for the edification of the public. We have received calls about Royal South Parkway, and I just wanted you to disabuse anyone who thinks that that is actually a City of South Fulton project.
Sure, the project, it's a state project run by GDOT. And I feel like we need to have signs all over the city that says, "Pardon our progress." It is looking like a mess. I get that. We did have staff go out and do an inspection. The conditions are not permanent. They are temporary. It's part of the construction process, and it will look like that until the process is complete. Unfortunately, we can't make it look all neat in the middle of a construction. You know, it's going to look that way, but I want everybody to be assured it's not going to stay that way, and GDOT has been contacted. They have been in contact with us, and we are regularly talking to GDOT about the projects in our city.
Thank you. And then lastly, I know that we've received a memo. I know internally, we are moving to Tyler Technologies. I'm just wondering if there's any advisory for particularly like the businesses that have to do licensing and things like that in the city?
Yes, that's actually one of our, you're gonna see notifications, so we are finally making the transition to Tyler Technology. It is a replacement for our ERP. One of the most exciting things is that it was actually done in this decade, and so we will have the ability to give you good reporting. We'll have some transparency models that will be incorporated, which will give us and the public the opportunity to see our operation more transparently. And we will be, there will be a blackout period of about 10 days, when, including weekends, where we will not be processing invoices, paying invoices. And so we are also going to be reaching out to our vendors to make sure that anybody who has a month-end invoice gets that into us timely so it can be processed. But part of our communication strategy is to reach out to our vendors so that they're aware that we are going to have that period. And you may have noticed, there's been a significant improvement in the turnaround time of invoices, so we're caught up.
And in particular, I know it's been a long time, so forgive me if I'm misspeaking. How does Tyler, does it replace Sages for people who are doing permits and things in Sages?
That's part two. Part one, we have to get our financial system up and running first, and our second part is Tyler will replace Sages, a different module of Tyler will replace Sages. So by the time we get to budget, we will be well into this. By the time we get to the end of the year, we will have fully transitioned both systems over.
So hold on, my business people, we gotta deal with Sages for a few more months. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
This question is for the City Attorney. In a lot of cities, the court calendars are publicized. We often get questions from residents about who is in court, when is court concerning cases. How, can you email those calendars? Can you put on your calendar to email the entire council those calendars, since we don't have a place, we can, a centralized place, we can go look for them?
So that may be a question for Ms. Dixon, because that's not something that I have access to either, but I don't mind reaching out to Ms. Dixon and see if that's something she can make available to you all.
So, so is that something that you do, Ms. Subedan, or is that the role of the City Attorney? Because Ms. Dixon reports up to you, correct?
She actually reports to the municipal court judge. However, you know, for day-to-day operations, she, Carmen Davis, ACM Carmen Davis oversees kind of her day-to-day activities. We'll make sure that that information is forthcoming. We also should be putting it on our website.
That has never been done.
We can fix that.
Okay, because that will be helpful.
Yeah.
All right, seeing and hearing no further questions, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That brings us to our first presentation for tonight, Project Lifesaver. Will be presented by the Police Chief, Keith Meadows, and I was corrected, Lieutenant Nicholas Williams is now Captain Nicholas Williams with the Police Department.
Good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to start off by giving a big shout-out to Councilman J.C. Sebastian for partnering with the Police Department on this Project Lifesaver. I know the issue of autism has been near and dear to your heart. Speaking of autism, maybe a couple of years ago, a mother came to me about an encounter that our police officers had with her autistic child. When I went back and looked at the body camera video, quite frankly, I didn't like what I saw. And I knew that it was extremely important for us to be able to put a higher level of training in place, along with fulfilling our mission of creating efficiencies within the Police Department through the use of technology. Well, I'm not going to take Captain William's thunder away from him, because he spearheaded this project along with Councilman J.C. Sebastian, so I just wanted to say from the South Fulton PD, thank you for your partnership on this one, and I'm going to turn it over to Captain Nick Williams.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager, staff. Thank you for having me. And just piggybacking off of what Chief Meadows said, this program is near and dear to my heart, because it actually hit home. My grandfather, he passed away from complications with dementia, and unfortunately, the jurisdiction that he lived in did not have program, I mean, Project Lifesaver. So I wanted to, you know, bring this to our agency, to our city, so that that person or resident of our city wouldn't have to experience the same type of experience that my family dealt with. So go ahead and get into the presentation. Again, we want to thank you, Councilman Sebastian. You spearheaded this initiative. Without you, I don't know if we would have been able to get it off the ground. So again, we want to thank you for your efforts to the South Fulton community. All right, there we go. All right, so just an overview about Project Lifesaver. This technology, it effectively locates wandering adults and children using personalized wristbands that emit tracking signals. When a loved one goes missing, our police officers, we've taken specialized training, and we have search and rescue teams that respond with specialized equipment. What's pictured here is one of our receivers that we use, and what our clients that we have registered, they have bands, what we call transmitters, that emit an audible sound to the receivers in helping us locate those who go wandering. This program is tried and true throughout the country and internationally. It has around 1,700 participating agencies across the US, Canada, and Australia, achieving over 3,800 rescues in 22 years with a 100% success rate. So this technology works. There we go. Oh, all right. So eligibility for this program, the safety of the residents of South Fulton is our highest priority, so we welcome those who have Alzheimer's disease, autism, and Down Syndrome. We also consider those who have other cognitive disorders that may cause them to chronically wander or become lost. To enter someone into this program, the following requirements must be met. The client must be a resident of South Fulton. The client must have a legally responsible caregiver willing to place the client in the program. Clients and caregiver must abide by the conditions of the program and the contract, and they must complete the application process. There we go. So our marketing strategy, we've partnered with Lexicon Strategies, and they've been very instrumental in putting the word out about this program. And we've targeted, you know, our audience, of course, those who have family members or loved ones that have cognitive disorders, but we're also doing community outreach, collaborating with healthcare providers, and storytelling through the media. So this is from Project Lifesaver. The search times for certified Project Lifesaver agencies have been reduced from hours, potentially days, down to minutes, and recovery times for Project Lifesaver agencies average 30 minutes, which is 95% less time than standard operations without Project Lifesaver. So again, our target audience are those caregivers, those who have Alzheimer's disease, dementia, autism, and Down Syndrome. The program has helped provide thousands of families peace of mind, knowing that their loved ones in protection and safety in case they go wandering. So that's the total number of those rescued using this technology. So this is our focus, to give those a peace of mind, to show its proven effectiveness, to have our officers take specialized training, and to emphasize the community support. Again, these are our marketing channels. Like I said, we partnered with Lexicon Strategies, and they've been instrumental in publishing material to get the word about Project Lifesaver to our residents. All right, there we go. Good to show the video. So we did a story with Fox 5 with the family that Chief Meadows mentioned, Ms. Devon and our son Kyle, and they've really been pushing this information out because they're in the community. They have a network of those who are on the spectrum, and they've been instrumental in helping us get residents registered for Project Lifesaver. So we wanted to show this story to highlight how this has been beneficial to us registering.
It's the latest Metro Atlanta agency to use Project Lifesaver to find people who wander. As Fox 5's Kim Lefler found out, it all stemmed from a mother's push for the Police Department to better serve the autistic community.
Well, after an incident with police involving her non-verbal son with autism, a South Fulton mother's been pushing for change, and she says Project Lifesaver is a step in the right direction.
It was traumatizing, really.
It's still tough for Devon Lee to think back to the day over three years ago, when her son Kyle went out for a bike ride and wandered into a backyard. That's when she says someone called police.
He saw Kyle on his bike. He ended up asking him, "What is your name?", right? And so Kyle says, "What's your name?", because he was doing echolayer, which is something that children, non-verbal children with autism do. At that point, I think the officer thought he was just being like a smart aleck or something. It ended up with Kyle being handcuffed and me being at the door screaming.
In the end, Lee says the officer realized Kyle had autism and didn't place him under arrest. Since then, she's worked with South Fulton Police to find better ways to serve the autistic community. That's when they learned about Project Lifesaver. It involves wearing a bracelet. If a person goes missing, law enforcement can then track the bracelet to find them.
Project Lifesaver is for people that wander. Most of them are seniors with Alzheimer's, dementia, children with autism, Down Syndrome. Out of over 4,600 searches, we have found everybody 100% of the time, and the average time is 30 minutes.
While the program is just getting started in South Fulton, Lee says it's a huge relief, knowing they'll have this extra safety measure in place, and she hopes it'll help other families, too.
It just gives me a sense of security where I'm not always on like, "Where's Kyle?", you know? Because God forbid, and I pray that it never happens, but God forbid if he ever wanders off, that tool is there to help us when we need it.
We have more information on how you can sign up for Project Lifesaver on our website, foxfiveatlanta.com. In South Fulton, Kim Lefler, Fox 5 News.
So when we talk about 21st century policing and, you know, community engagement, this is So when we talk about twenty-first century policing and, you know, community engagement, this is it right here. This is it in the flesh. And because, you know, this mother, she could have been against the police department. She could have went to the media and been totally against what we're actually here for. But instead, she decided to join us to find a solution. And that's why I'm thankful for Chief Meadows and his efforts and his leadership for listening to us to find a solution so that we'd never have an issue like this again. Um, if we could bring the slide back up. All right, so thus far, we have issued, uh, or we have twelve clients registered with, uh, Project Lifesaver, and we have a, uh, waiting list. Um, unfortunately, everyone who's registered or for our signup, they, uh, they haven't qualified, but we do see a need for more transmitters. So we've, uh, in this slide, we're kindly asking that each council member take into account the allocation of funds for Project Lifesaver transmitter kits. Uh, the, each kit costs three hundred and forty-seven dollars, and total cost per district is, uh, se- one thousand seven hundred and thirty-five. And, uh, we're just requesting that each council member, uh, purchase some for the police department so that we can concede, continue to, uh, have this program within the city of South Fulton and issue these transmitters to our, uh, residents that are on the spectrum and have these different cognitive disorders.
So the last piece of that, um, I would ask you to disregard. We've gotten with the city manager, and we've been able to find, uh, some funding for, for the project.
I'm sorry?
That's okay.
My apologies.
And so we just want to make sure that, that, um, when we look at the resources, that we have them distributed to all of those people that need them. And so I sat down with Ms. Subedan, I believe it was last week, where we, we talked about the funding piece of it. And so I, I, I saw the faces. So having said that, um, we'd be more than happy to answer any questions now.
While I'm waiting, uh, for the queue to load, I'm going to go ahead and yield to, uh, your partner here on council, uh, Councilman Sebastian, if you have any words.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, you said something about the, the parent of the child, and I think we cannot overlook the importance or take lightly the way how she approached the encounter with her child. Because, um, any one of us are, of course, overly dependent upon children, right? And I commend her, because when I, the first time I talked to her, she explained the entire story. And she mentioned if she had a way that she could tag Kyle. And that's when the idea started to come forth. But, um, the other reason why I continue to push for this, and I mentioned this before, I think, there was a kid, there was a young man, not a kid, not a child, a young man, who was lost in the woods or the forest of District Four. And he was there for over ten days, I believe. And we searched and searched, and we were fearful of the worst, until somehow he made it back to Harwood out of the bushes. And I still talk to that family. And so if this person had this technology, it will be not ten plus days, but it will be half an hour. And so, um, I want people to really get that this is a really great program. And once you qualify, you'll be doing your, your family a disservice if you do not at least attempt to sign up for this, if you know you have people who are in danger of, of walking away, whether they're young, whether they're adults, or whether they are, um, are seniors.
Yeah, to your point, Councilman, um, when, um, Kyle's mom came into the police department, you know, um, I instantly reached out to a friend of mine, Bart Barter, who retired, uh, from Sarasota Police Department in, in Florida. And he goes all over the country teaching law enforcement about kids with autism. And so we actually flew Bart in, and he taught every one of our police officers about, um, a lot of the things that she mentioned there in the video. And, and, um, it was eye-opening for many of our police officers, because they, reflecting back, they realized that they had, had encounters with, um, autistic child at some point or another. And that, that, that community is certainly growing, uh, and South Fulton is no exception. So we just want to make sure that we're getting the right types of services out and making sure that we're servicing our community the way that our residents want to see.
And I compliment you for that. Um, I, I, I meant to mention that piece, because this is not just about the program, Project Lifesaver.
Right.
But it's also about the police department's, um, willingness to implement this training to the officers.
Right.
Um, about six weeks ago, I had a friend who told me he had to go to a funeral for a friend's child. And that friend's child in, in another jurisdiction was actually an autistic kid that was killed by the police. Because they did not have that training, and they did not have some of the things that we put in here to get in the city of South Fulton through the police department.
Right.
So that piece going forward is absolutely going to be important as well. How officers continue to be trained to, to deal with folks who, you know, whether they're on the spectrum or have different cognitive issues going, going on. So thank you guys for the willingness and for the leadership in getting that done.
Absolutely.
The Chair recognizes Dr. Ralph.
Um, I'm going to thank, um, Chief Meadows and Councilman Sebastian on your efforts. These are the things that make me proud to serve in this city, so thank you for the good work. I wanted to ask about the qualifications, because, um, you know, sometimes government can be a little complicated. I hope, you know, whether a person is just, um, diagnosed with dementia or autism, that that should be sufficient. I hope we don't have a lot of layered criteria to qualify. I would love to receive a flyer that talks about this program, so I can send it out to my residents, so they know, because we don't know everybody. And so I think if we really work on a campaign, um, to get the word out, that would be a great thing. And then finally, I think we also need to do something that's public-facing, because the incident that you talked about was because a resident called the police, right? And so we also need to educate the broader community about autism. And I know we have an Autism Festival, but that's not really a way for people to get information in a, you know, you might pick up material, but to have a workshop to educate the public, I think that would be very beneficial. And, um, last but not least, what, based on the people who are on the waiting list, how many people are seeking services at this time?
I would say roughly, uh, forty percent. Um, and I think it's mainly because they think they live in the city of South Fulton, and they don't. That's been the biggest challenge. And because, you know, we, we say the South Fulton region, but they don't live within city limits. And based off of legal, uh, when we, we can't serve those outside of our jurisdiction. Yes, so we've, we've come up with a communication strategy to those to reach out to their jurisdiction agencies and, uh, promote Project Lifesaver to them. And we've had, uh, Chattahoochee Hills and another agi- I, I believe Fairburn. Uh, actually, they're adopting it now, so.
Wonderful.
Because the technology isn't just within our jurisdiction. If somebody from South Fulton goes to Fairburn and they, they wander, we could still use the same technology. So, uh, the ultimate goal is to have it regionally, not just in South Fulton. Because currently, right now, it's just Atlanta and South Fulton within this area. I believe DeKalb County has it as well.
Yeah, I think this is a great topic for a South Fulton Municipal Association meeting, to get people on board. Um, I think this, this is, this is really important. And I know you said forty percent, but I think you said like twelve kids, so like, so is it that the ones you have are not in our jurisdiction? Or do we have more that's in our jurisdiction? Because I heard you asked for a certain amount for us, and I understand that's not an issue now. But is it like twenty kids or twenty people, or how many people?
So we, we started off with thirty kids total. And we, the concern was that we would run out and we wouldn't be able to continue to issue the transmitters.
Okay.
But, um, Chief Meadows said we found a resolution.
Yeah.
And also understand, this isn't just for children. This is for.
Right, adults.
Right, right, adults as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And so what we've done is I've, I've tasked Captain Williams and his team with going back through all of our old missing persons reports and finding those people that have, um, gone missing, uh, more than once, so that we could reach out to those people proactively to try to get them in. Because one of the goals, as we said, is to create efficiencies within the organization, and saving man-hours from having to, to look for those individuals certainly helps speed up the process, and it also ensures that we'll find them safely as well.
Yeah, and, and last but not least, please go to QLS and make them aware of this program.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Thank you. And, and even our senior commu- housing communities, I think this would be beneficial. Yeah, thank you so much.
The Chair recognizes District Three Councilwoman Willis.
So we have a huge, um, uh, autistic, uh, community and, um, uh, special needs community. And a lot of them play in our, um, gym every weekend, because we don't have proper accommodations for them. It's called the Miracle League.
Yeah, we, we, we.
And so I would ask that you all not only volunteer, because they have a game Saturday, um, but, you know, they have series every quarter. But I would ask that you go, um, contact Ms. Nunley and let her know that we have this program for City of South Fulton residents, um, so that we could make sure they are aware that we have this program. Um, I'm a little sensitive about them, because they weren't properly transitioning in the city, but that's for another subject, and we'll be bringing information about that, um, another day. Um, but I am interested in knowing, how many, how many, um, devices do you currently have?
So we started out with thirty. We have, uh, approximately twelve registered in the program.
Twelve registered. And, um, you said each device costs how much?
Pull it back up. Three forty-seven.
Three forty-seven. Um, and are you all going to, are you like, slow-rolling this, or what is your goal?
The goal is to have every person who frequently wanders in the city of South Fulton registered in this program.
So do you have a, a limitation on how many you're trying to roll out a year? Because I know that resources will be, um, a factor. I just need to know, because, um, there may be some organizations that I can reach out to you, reach out to on the police behalf to purchase, um, some of these devices. Nonprofits that may purchase some of the devices, but I don't want to purchase devices that may be obsolete, may end up being obsolete, because you all don't have enough time to roll them out, so I don't want to be too aggressive.
Right.
Um, so my question is, are you all trying to just do so many a year, so many a quarter? What's your goal? So I don't know.
So we're thinking, uh, thirty within a year annually.
Okay.
And, uh, also, you know, if it does become an issue with funding, also, uh, looking at alternative funding sources as well, through fundraising, uh, grants, you know, as well, so.
I mean, with something like this, companies will probably happily donate to the cause. It's just a matter of asking and following our donation policy, of course.
Sure.
Um, I thank you and Councilwoman Sebastian for, um, looking out for our, um, less of these and least of these. Um, but I, I think that is a community that needs to know that this program exists, uh, Miracle League. Um, and the other question is, um, so the whole, the whole packet is three forty-seven. And so is this something that could be purchased with the, uh, speed enforcement cameras funds?
On the funding that goes to police, we could use it for that.
Okay.
Yeah, funding really isn't an issue. When, when the chief and I, um, met on this, he also explained that they want to, um, implement in phases, make sure their first phase is managed and successful, and scale it up. But, um, we're not funding limited for this program. There are different sources that could be used.
Okay, so you don't need the donations for, um, for this? I mean, if you use, if we get outside funding or donations for this, then you can take that funding and use it for something else, so.
Right, I would never say we don't need donations. I just, for the record, as long as it, it meets our criteria and comes to the council for approval, and we're getting the devices that are consistent with the ones we have. So I wouldn't say we don't, but I don't want anybody to think that because of funding, the program is limited.
Okay, so, so we're looking at thirty devices at the, right now, the cost is three forty-seven a year. Is that, that's your goal, thirty a year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And I just wanted to speak on that Miracle League piece. Kyle is actually involved with Miracle League, so we've talked to his mom, Devon, and we're already in the process of having the other children in Miracle League registered as well.
Okay, so you have a Miracle League father right there sitting behind you, Dr. Tarber, and I can guarantee you, he did nothing about this. So that's why I was saying, if you could just go to one of their games and talk to Ms. Nunley and let her know that this, this exists only for the City of South Fulton residents, that would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
I'm sorry. All right, we have Councilwoman Bill, Councilwoman Gomes, and Mayor Protem Pritchett. And I'm going to ask if we can move, we do have one more, uh, item to discuss. Uh, Department of Community Affairs is here. Madam Subedan? Are, are members of the DCA here?
Yes, they are here.
Okay.
They are here, I'm sorry. I didn't realize it was a question.
Yeah, no, we usually have, uh, whenever we have guests, we usually have them first in the work session. But, all right, Councilwoman Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Wonderful job. Thank you, um, Councilman Sebastian. You all have shared, um, with our camp last year with individuals with disabilities, so thank you. This is a much-needed in our community, especially for individuals with disabilities. Um, the application process, can you talk to me a little bit about that? Because I do have two people that came to my mind that lives in my, um, neighborhood that suffer from severe dementia and, and has wandered sometimes. So what is the application process? How does someone contact you and register for this particular program? And again, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So with the application process, the criteria is they must be South Fulton residents, meaning they live within the city's limits. Uh, they must, the caretaker must reside with them. The caretaker or family member must reside with them. And that was another one of the disqualifiers that we came across, is that some family members didn't have a, uh, clinical diagnosis, and they just said that they thought that their parent or relative, uh, had some form of a cognitive disorder. So we. So we, uh, followed up and said, you know, they have to have a clinical diagnosis in order for them to qualify for the program. And, uh, in order for them to register, they can go to any South Fulton Police precinct. They can, uh, go to our, uh, any of our social media pages where we have a signup, uh, QR code, um, where it will prompt them to put their information in. And we have, uh, members of our technical operations team following up on those that sign up.
The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gomes.
Uh, definitely, uh, I want to give the kudos to Councilman J.C., and then also to, to you all for partnering. This is very much needed. And, um, our community will probably be very thankful. One of the things that I did want to know is, how do you track? How, eh, how long are they in this program? Or, and also to the life expectancy of the equipment. If they disenroll in the program, do they have to give the equipment back? Um, just trying to figure out if this is something that is gifted to them and that they're also at some point in time, um, be able to be a little bit more independent on their own. And is there a tracking mechanism for the police department?
Yes, ma'am. So what I have right here, this is the receiver that we use, and they have transmitters that are on their wrists, or however, or they can put it on their ankle or article of clothing. And what we use is, uh, is analog technology. It's not GPS. It's radio frequencies that we use to track them. Uh, to your point about how, how long they can be in the program, it's forever. It's no expiration date. The, but the most important part of the program is the caregiver and the changing of the battery. So it does use, it is, the transmitters are operated using batteries, and we give them a supply of batteries within the kit. So it, it's not just that we give you the, the transmitter and then we're gone. Just call us whenever. So it it's not just that we give you the transmitter and then we're gone, just call us whenever they go missing. With every thirty days, we contact them for follow-ups to see if the transmitter is working. We give them a tester to make sure that the transmitter is active, that they have to test every day. So there are qualifications for the caregiver, which is why that's one of the most important parts of the program.
That's awesome, I didn't even know that. What about the officers? Do we have officers that are certified just to deal with the program?
Yes, ma'am. So each shift on patrol, they have at least one, we call operator for Project Lifesaver. In my unit, Technology and Intelligence, the Technical Operations Team, everybody is trained on how to use it. And we also have, I believe we have some officers here who are trained on how to use it as well. So it's department-wide, even with our criminal investigations, when they respond to the missing persons calls, they they're trained on how to use it as well. So we have plethora of officers who know how to use this technology to find missing persons.
Excellent, excellent. I don't have anything else to say. Go out.
And finally, Mayor Protem Linda Pritchett.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Sebastian, for this. This is really, really important. Years ago, over a decade ago, my mother, oh, more, longer than that, my mother who died of Alzheimer's went missing in New York. And we had to set up like a search thing via the phone and, you know, who saw her last and where was she? And thank God for the taxi driver that gave her a ride home. She had her address written on the paper but didn't know, I don't know what was happening. However, when subsequently, when searches like that happen for either someone with Alzheimer's or someone with autism, some jurisdictions use drones to try to find those individuals. So I wondered if, I know that we have drones that you use. If you can think about wanting to put the drones up when you get one of these calls. And, you know, that might be helpful as well.
So Project Lifesaver is actually in a testing phase where one of these receivers are attached to a drone. So we're getting up to speed with that, just not there yet. But they do, what we do have is an antenna that attaches to our vehicles as we're driving around that spreads out a further radius, a further range, so that can help us with locating those who go missing. So we are catching up with the technology and hopefully, once it's, you know, approved, we'll be able to adopt one that attaches to a drone as well.
That's excellent. Also, is there a, like a social media BOLO alert that won't compromise, you know, any children or anyone? But, you know, everyone's on social media, including us. And so an alert like this, if it goes out, you know, can be helpful. A lot of people on Nextdoor that lose their dogs, they put it on there. And I've seen some dogs reunited, you know, things like that. Even children that go missing, I see it on Nextdoor a lot. And sometimes they're reunited, so, you know, something to consider.
Well, what I want to specify is, this is primarily for those with cognitive disorders. Those who are runaway children, we don't want to register those for the program because this, that's what the Project Lifesaver was designed for, those with cognitive disorders.
No, I agree.
So, okay.
Yeah, I'm with you. Thank you very much.
I just didn't want those parents seeing my child runs away, so I want to register.
No, call police. Thank you, I do.
All right, thank you, thank you for this important work. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Last presentation on tonight's agenda is a discussion of Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Main Street Program will be presented by Assistant City Manager Carmen Davis and Elizabeth Elliott, Downtown Preservation Planner with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. Staff, please bring up the presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. So today, we're want, we want to give you an update on the Main Street efforts. As you know, we've talked about these, this issue in the in the past previously. And so it's been a while since we discussed it. So we wanted to take this opportunity to update you of where we are with it. Some of the changes that are coming and some progress that has happened regarding revitalizations in these areas. First time with the clicker, let's see. There we go. So the topics I want to cover today, we'll give you a little background of where we've been and where we're going. We'll also talk about the Red Oak and Old National District's revitalization efforts. Give you an update and status on the Seismore Urban Design Project. And we also will give you a preview of the renovations happening with four thousand eight hundred, hundred Campbell Drive, which is the future office for the Red Oak District. We will also talk about the upcoming Main Street application process with the Department of Community Affairs with the State Department. And then we have Ms. Elizabeth Elliott, who is the Downtown Planner with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, who will answer questions that you may have regarding this process. And then we'll talk next steps. So a little background. If you remember, some of you were here at the time and and some of you were not at the time. But in two thousand twenty-one, December fourteenth, the City Council approved the establishment of the Red Oak and Old National Advisory Boards and supported us pursuing the Main Street Program designation. Fast forwarding, September tenth, we had a discussion regarding the status and clarity of the Main Street Program requirements. And so at that time, there were several questions as to whether Red Oak and Old National District qualify for the program. And then we also had questions as to the process. And at that time, Ms. Elliott was not able to attend, but she did solicit your questions. And we provide those in in written form. So today, she is here in person, so you can hear straight from her mouth some of the updates with the program and how, where do we go from here based on our discussion. And then lastly, today, that's why we're here, to reaffirm City Council's thoughts regarding the Main Street Program for the Red Oak District and then revise the Old National District's resolution. Because at the last discussion, it was mentioned that, and based on the analysis from the D C A, the Department of Community Affairs, is that Old National District did not meet the concept for Main Street, for the Main Street Program. And so we knew that we may have to take this time to revitalize, revisit the resolution to tailor it to its efforts that we're doing now, the revitalization of Old National District. So so that's where we are today. And so if you don't mind, if I take a point of professional privilege to recognize a few people today who may be here, who who are behind the scenes doing the work for these different districts. And so first, I want to recognize our Economic Development Team. Some of them may be here, so if you're here, please stand. We have Teresa Parhams, who's the Senior Projects Manager. We have, there's Teresa. We have Trevor Thornton, who is the Red Oak Main Street Manager. Cora Davis, Special Projects Manager, there she is. And then Nyla Daniels, Special Project Coordinator. She may not be present, but yes, so she's, she's also one of our important staff, part of the team. And then secondly, if you don't mind, I would like to also recognize some of our board members with the Red Oak Advisory Board and the Old National Advisory Board. I believe some are present, we did invite them to attend. And so if you are part of the, one of the advisory boards, can you please stand and see some Red Oak folks? Wonderful, wonderful. Thank you for attending. So these are the people that do the great work, our advisory boards. They they volunteer and make sure that the districts that they're representing are are well-kept and continue to progress for the good of our community. Next slide. All right, so district update, I'm sorry. There we go. So district updates. So currently, where we are, as I mentioned, we have two active boards. And so those boards hold community events and activities and educational workshops to support the businesses revitalization and efforts. And so as we have mentioned since two thousand twenty-one, these have been very active boards doing the good work in their area. And along with that, we had the Seismore Urban Design Project, who is actually doing onsite work, working with the community to get their input as to how they would like to see the community progress and grow. They have been doing map mapping, site map, site mapping surveys. I'm trying to move fast because I know that we have a lot to do. But they they have been doing site mapping, including the the residents in the area. These are exercises to talk about how they would like to see their areas developed and getting input on what type of developments will go, where they should go, and how they should be designed to better improve the area and move us forward for the the future to sustain its progress. And so a report will be coming soon. There is a third community meeting that will be scheduled, whether that will be in the community or before City Council. But soon, sometimes by April, we should be able to bring a final report to you and report out what the results are from those exercises with the Seismore Group. And then finally, we have, as far as an update for the efforts that have been going on in these districts, is the renovation of the four hundred Campbell Drive property. That is the future home of the Red Oak District Office. And so with that, I have a number of slides to show you related to the Campbell Drive property because this may be an opportunity for you to see this for the first time. So we want to show you the progress that are that are happening with that because this will be a central location for the community to gather and for activities to happen in that district. So. Get to that slide. So four thousand eight hundred Campbell Drive. So this is a rendering of the elevation on the rear and the front. So the bottom right-hand corner is the front elevation of that property. And so this building will be transformed into a central hub. It's a multifunctional space of about forty-six hundred square feet, including the the addition that's being added to it. It has been budgeted for two point five million dollars. That's the budget that has been carried over from its initial allocation at the time of the approval of this project. Of course, over time, and inflation has occurred, there's a possibility that there would require additional funds to add to this project due to the increasing cost of construction. So we may be revisiting that and talking about that a little more in the future. And then also, another part of the project are utilities and infrastructure improvements. And then, so we'll let you know where we are in the process. Currently, it's in architectural and site design phase. So we're still working through the design of it, but we are close to the end of that phase. On the next slide, you'll see a good version of the front. I'm sorry, that's the rear of it. You'll see the back showing a full porch going across with the, in the center, the stairs entering into the facility. And so there will be interior and exterior features of this project. The exterior features call for outdoor classroom and an amphitheater. There's, so there'll be outdoor classroom facilities for gathering, a pavilion area for farmers and farmer market and community events, a playground, as well as a parking lot that will include E V charging stations. And then the the facility will be surrounded by safety and privacy fencing. And so this is a floor plan of the interior space. And so the interior space will include, will be updated, A D A compliant features, including a new elevator for accessibility. The kitchen will be modernized, there will be kitchen warming areas, conference rooms, offices, and workspaces for the public. And it also will include storage spaces. And so this is a floor plan of the first floor. And then we have also a second level, which would also include those features. There we go. So in in, I'm sorry, that's that's not the right one. I think we're doing double control here. So exterior, so this is the first floor. We need to go to the second floor. The next, next slide, please. There we go. So on this one, this is the second floor floor plan. And so it also shows classrooms, meeting spaces, and offices. And so with the interior design, with the design phase, we're at nine, I'm sorry, ninety percent complete. The site design is about sixty-five percent complete and the overall is eighty-five percent finished. So once we get to a ninety ninety percent completion, we will move forward with bidding. And we're expecting the permitting process to occur around April fifteenth. So what are the next steps? The next steps are, as I mentioned just a moment ago, once we get ninety percent design completion, we will prepare for the preliminary construction costs and submit the designs for permit review. And then we will request construction bids from our standby contractors. Bids will go to those internal standby contractors so we can speed up the process, the bidding process. And then also, the construction period will take about nine to twelve months, that's our estimate. And so we will also prepare a groundbreaking ceremony as well as we go forward with that project. So that is an update on the Red Oak Project. And so next, we will talk about, I'm sorry, trying to get to my next screen. All right, so the startup process for the Main Street application cycle. So as we talk about the Main Street designation process, as I mentioned earlier, we we want to bring this to you so we can begin to think, are we going to continue with the pursuing of Red Oak being in a designated Red Main Street District? And so the the cycle for the application process is coming up very shortly. The process opens on May first and it will end on July first. And so with that deadline approaching, fastly approaching, we want to make sure we discuss this and know that we can move forward as it has been set to do. Next slide. So with that, I will introduce Ms. Elizabeth Elliott with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, who will answer your questions. She, part of her discussion will include a little bit about what Main Street Program is. She'll share the the application process with us. And then she'll give us a few comments about our two districts, the Red Oak and Old National District, and answer any questions you may have. So, Ms. Elliott.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Elizabeth Elliott. I'm with the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, Office of Downtown Development, and I'm happy to be here today. I know that we're a little pressed on time, so I figured, let's just jump into questions. And if any of the questions sort of delve into some of the items that Assistant City Manager brought up, please just let me know and I'm happy to answer any questions that y'all have.
If you do have a presentation, we do have, we have an hour, we have until six o'clock.
Oh, okay, oh, my bad.
You don't have to take the entire hour.
Yes, yes, no, I don't think.
I wanted to make sure I knew that this was a topic.
I don't think anybody wants to hear me wax poetic for an hour, so. So as far as the Main Street Program, the Main Street Program is a program that was developed by the National Trust of Historic Preservation in nineteen eighty as combating urban flight, or urban renewal, so essentially demolishing or negating historic commercial districts across the nation. What they did is they looked at communities that were bucking this trend. And so essentially, they found four common tenants in communities that were still remaining vibrant, remaining vital. And those were what we call the four points, which is design, organization, promotion, and economic development. So the Main Street Program is essentially a program to help historic downtowns across the nation to revitalize and remain vibrant, and also current downtowns that are, have that moniker to maintain that vibrancy. And so there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that go into being part of a Main Street Program. In the state of Georgia, we have an onboarding process called the Startup Process. In the state of Georgia, we have an onboarding process called the Startup Process, where there is an application that, um, Ms. Jones has talked about. And so it does open on May first. It closes July one. In that, there is an application. Um, it is not overly burdensome. Um, it's sort of basic information about the district. Um, we do have parameters and I shared those with Ms. Jones, um, Davis. Sorry. Um, so, shared those with Ms. Davis, um, that, uh, sort of outline what an eligible district looks like. Um, those are something that are sort of hot off the presses. They are a draft. Um, it's something that our new director for our office, Office of Downtown Development, really wanted us to put in writing. We've always had it sort of in our heads, um, but we really wanted to sort of have it where it's an official. So, um, for when I was here in twenty twenty-one, driving around Old National and Red Oak and sort of looking at the districts and determining what the appropriate use for the Main Street approach, because essentially it is an approach, it's a philosophy for downtown development that's multi- multifaceted. It goes a little bit more beyond than just building and business for economic development. It is really looking at the greater whole, so activation, um, safety, community engagement, vitality, all those different things. And that's sort of the secret sauce that is Main Street. Um, but we also know that we are the Office of Downtown Development and Main Street isn't the right approach for everybody. We've seen it where there's communities that try to adopt the Main Street approach and it's a little bit of a square peg, round hole. And we actually find that they discover that it's almost an impediment to what they're trying to accomplish. Because yes, it's a wonderful program, but it's not a program for everybody. Um, and so when we, we like to say that, so we really want to make sure that we're using the right tool for the right community in the right area. Um, if Main Street is not the right approach for a community, we are still the Office of Downtown Development and we are still a resource for any community who wants to utilize our services. Um, and those can be anything from, um, consultation with us for different, um, topics, connecting resources. If we don't know the answer, connecting to other entities across the state that can help answer their questions and bring, um, whatever efforts are being moved forward or wanting to be identified. Um, and so that's a little bit about Main Street and what we do in the Office of Downtown Development. So we're not, or just, we are not the Office of Main Street. We are the Office of Downtown Development. And the Main Street program is just one of the things that we offer. Um, does anybody have any questions about kind of that portion?
Mr. Clerk, can you bring up a queue? Is there a queue?
Mayor Protem, um, Pritchard asked the mayor before he stepped out, uh, that I may, if possible, could I have district courtesy, just like he just gave J.C.?
So we do have, uh, Councilmember Willis, Councilmember Sebastian in the queue thus far.
Okay.
Um, I just have one simple question. Are we on track, um, for the Main Street, uh, certification? I understand you just gave a overview and you said we're going to be considered as a startup Main Street. By the way, I represent the Red Oak Historic District. And so the legislation that was legislated in twenty twenty-one was my legislation, based off feedback that I received from our community who wanted the community revitalized. Um, the community is one of the oldest areas, um, in the city of South Fulton, hence why there's a post office. It was once a city called Red Oak. Um, and this, that area was never put into any type of overlay. Um, so, uh, we wanted to make sure that the area was revitalized so that we could complement other cities. Uh, Main Street runs from Atlanta all the way to Palmetto. And, and East Point is doing well. College Park is doing well. Union City is working on their revitalization. Um, and so we want to revitalize as an area where we have, um, you know, vibrant, vibrancy in the area. I want to thank the Red Oak Historic District and Trevor, um, for all of their efforts and, um, getting us to this point. Um, but my question is, are we trending in the right direction?
So as far as trending in the right direction, I want to commend Trevor and also Caitlin before him because I was so impressed with Caitlin's work on the history, um, research and connections that she made. And so, uh, I, I want to, uh, sort of shout out her efforts as well because she did an amazing job in sort of finding a lot of that information. Um, and Trevor, like, kind of took the mantle and kept running with it. So, uh, uh, kudos to both of those people. Um, as far as the application, so like I said, the application opens in May. It is an application and so there is a review process. And so I cannot state, because I'm not the only one that looks at them, about, about whether it will be approved or denied, uh, approved or denied based on the application. However, if the application is denied, we always do comments about like why it was denied, um, things to improve upon in the future, or if it's something that it's just a mismatch of programmatic entities, um, we will communicate that as well. And so I can't give you a hard and fast answer today unfortunately because it is not just my decision to make. But as far as being ready to apply, one hundred percent, um, everybody involved has been, um, dotting their i's, dotting their i's, crossing their t's, um, making sure that they're in the right position to apply. Once the application is in, I, again, I'm not the only one that makes the decision and so that would be me overstepping if I could say a definite yes will be accepted or no will not be accepted. And so, um, that's sort of my very diplomatic answer.
Right. And so the last time we were denied, went through this process, we have in writing that the only thing that stopped us at that time was we didn't have this resolution that was adopted in twenty twenty-one attached to the application. Uh, but since then, we have put priorities other places. And, um, which why it has taken so long for us to, uh, move fast forward with the construction for the Main Street program, we put our priority on Old National Highway. Um, although we are always accused that Old National is mistreated, we made sure that Old National, um, when Christopher Pike was here, we broke ground on the Economic Development Office. And, uh, when Mr., uh, Jones got here, we actually cut the ribbon for the Economic Development Office. And we turned the space that we had dedicated for Red Oak Main Street into a mini precinct in the district. But as you can see, we are moving fast forward to get the Main Street office open. Um, I want to thank, um, yes, Caitlin, but I also want to thank, um, former Chair Attorney Weems and Attorney Patterson for helping us facilitate the, uh, purchase of the Campbell Road Priest, uh, Campbell Road Main Street, uh, house from the Fulton County Housing Authority. And we had done that in, uh, twenty nineteen. And so, um, I am looking forward to us moving forward. But, um, in my opinion, we are one city and this is going to benefit everyone. And this is a Main Street that I keep, again, that runs from Atlanta to Palmetto. And it's time for South Fulton to start making progress in our portion of the Main Street. Again, thanks to the Red Oak Historic District Board. They're all residents that live in this city that have contributed. And Caitlin did an amazing job with the history. And, um, and thank you, Mr. Trevor, for, um, carrying the progress on. Um, I yield, uh, I do have some questions concerning the Campbell Road project, but I'll yield, um, for my other colleagues to answer questions at this point. I have two minutes and forty-four seconds in my first five minutes. Thank you.
And I just wanted to mention kudos on the Campbell Street project. Um, we always like to say public follows pri- or private follows public investment. So just the fact that the city is investing in that project in the Red Oak District is one of the major first steps of revitalization. Because a lot of times we get people asking why, like, I want, like, I want people to invest here. It's like, great, but are you investing in yourselves? And so investing in yourselves through that project in the Red Oak District is one of the major first, first steps. And I want to give kudos to the city and city leadership and everybody involved, the Red Oak Board, everybody supporting this effort. That is a huge step forward and I'm so excited to see the completion of that project.
Counsel, Ms. Sebastian.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Uh, just want to thank everyone for their presentation. Assistant City Manager Davis. I drive along that road pretty often. And you can see the distant difference when you drive from within the city of Fable and that I go through almost every day. Then you get to Union City. Then you get into the city of South Fulton and it goes down. Then you come out of the city of South Fulton into College Park and then continue into East Point and all of that is a difference. I, I've always been pretty excited about this area being redeveloped and the concepts that I've seen and some of the projects that I've seen, um, that potentially can be done along this corridor. I've been always been pretty excited for what we can do in this area. So I look forward to continuing to support that effort. Um, my question is, I remember at one, one point, and this is for you Assistant City Manager, at one point, first of all, how big is the property where that building is going to be, the, the land area? Um, do, do you know? How many acres?
I'm going to call my lifeline. And one of, one of, one of the things that remind me that I forgot to mention, uh, on efforts of this project is, uh, the Department of General Services, Mr. Dyson, who's heading the, the development and renovation of this property, along with Ms. Flags, Laura Flags, who is the project manager. So I will call my lifeline, Mr. Dyson, about the size of this project, of the property.
Of, of the, of the, how many acres is that building sitting on? And I'll tell you why I'm asking that question. I'm not sure if you all are aware of this. The title of the two week is, well, I believe at one point, this is the property we were talking about, even developing the area around this building where we could hold even small events. Right? Um, yeah, it, it was in a presentation that Addie Jones did, I believe. We had that conversation. So you may want to go back and look in the records and see if it's there. So I'm not saying to do it. I'm just saying that thought did exist in a presentation that I saw here. I believe it was my first here in council.
Well, it's, I believe the space is designed for small events, community events, uh, farmers markets.
I didn't see that in the.
A small amphithe-
Is it, is it in the?
Yes, I, I apologize. We did not have, eh, at the time of me presenting, uh, submitting the renovation, uh, site plans.
Yes.
Showing outside, but I will definitely send that to all of you.
Nice, thank you.
The full property.
That, that's, that's what I was asking. Thank you.
Counsel, Ms. Willis.
So I, I want to know why we're taking so long. Because we've been talking about this project since, like I said, twenty twenty-one. And I've seen concept after concept after concept. With Councilmember Sebastian, did say I have the original plans that I worked with, um, both Economic Development Directors, former ones on. I understand what happened with the Main Street. The application was incomplete. But I'm talking about the Campbell Road project. So, um, there was a space for us to do the amphitheater, a small amphitheater-like, uh, space, not anything huge. In case if people want to do like little puppet shows and community garden, all of that was included. Um, I would like this ready. And I spoke with you all about this last week to present to the community on the April seventeenth Economic Development Meeting. Um, we have been waiting years for this. I've been patient. And my patience is running kind of thin at this point. Um, our community needs to be updated. Uh, when we, when I had a conversation, just to be transparent, um, Sizemore came out to the community in October. They were supposed to have something back to us in December. We're now going into the second quarter of twenty twenty-five. Um, I understand there has been some staff turnover. But, uh, I, I, I need all of this ready for presentation to my community on Thursday, April seventeenth.
Well, that's a strong possibility, depending on the permitting, uh, the finalization of the designs. We're close. We're, uh, about eighty percent there. Uh, as I mentioned in my presentation, we're expecting to take it to permitting on April fifteenth. So we're, we're, we're targeting toward that point. We're close. We're close. Um, uh, some delays happened regarding the, uh, ADA, ADA accessibility. Some redesign had to take place, so I know that was a delayed moment. Um, but we're, we're coming, we're almost there to the, at the, in the finishing line, so we're close.
So we talked about ADA accessibility over a year ago. It was decided amongst this council to add an elevator in. Um, before the former director resigned, he said that this project was over ninety percent completed. Um, and so, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to respect the process. Um, and I do respect the process and I respect everybody, what everybody is doing. Um, but it's been over a year.
Yeah. As I said in my, uh, presentation, we're about eighty-five percent on the, um, the architectural design, but the site design, meaning exterior features, we're about sixty-five percent. So, uh, we're, we're expecting that to increase, uh, close to ninety percent somewhere in April.
So I would ask Ms. Subidan, wherever we are, I, I just need a presentation, um, delivered to our community on the seventeenth, wherever we are. And, um, I would like the Sizemore report that was promised to the community in December, but we're now in, that's going into the second quarter of twenty twenty-five. Um, I would like for that also to be, um, presented back to the community, being that we are almost four months behind. And I, I, I do appreciate everything and I know that we've had some staff turnover. Um, but it's been years. And we're, this community is ready for some things to happen. They're ready for change. Um, and we promised them change. And they've been participating, showing up in charrettes, in meetings, and advocating. Our board has been working hard. And so we just got to move along. And I've been patient. While we place priorities in other communities when we are accused that we're not caring about other communities. But we have been putting parties in other communities and, um, we just need to move Red Oak along. Because as Councilmember Sebastian says, when we drive through Fable and the Palmetto, it's beautiful. When it comes to South Fulton, it's a different, um, environment. When we drive out of South Fulton, we go back into another beautiful environment and that's College Park, East Point. And even Atlanta is doing, um, you know, amazing work because they have the Belt Line where you pick up there. And so, South Fulton, we need to move along. Thank you.
Understood.
Mayor Protem, I'm going to have you call. I don't know where we are in the queue, but I do just want to make a quick correction. Uh, I was advised by our amazing parliamentarian that we were actually supposed to start our zoning hearing at five. However, we only have a few cases, so we have more time. I just want everybody to be cognizant of that. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. So just want to ask two quick questions. So from this whole presentation, as I understand it, at this time, an application needs to be submitted. Is that correct?
Yes.
Once it opens on May first. Yes.
Okay. And then number two, a new resolution needs to be drafted? Or there is currently a resolution that was already adopted that would suffice for your requirements?
Our office never received a resolution. So we would just need, if there's a resolution that was passed, regardless of the date, we just need that particular resolution.
And to answer, there is a resolution? Uh, so we do, we are prepared with that resolution to move forward for the application process. Um, what I was also mentioning is about the Old National District, that we also have a similar resolution, uh, indicating in that resolution that we will pursue the Main Street program. Uh, however, with that, um, said, there have been some evaluation of the red, I'm, I'm sorry, of the Old National District, showing that it does not, and what we've learned from the DCA is that Old National does not meet the concept for Main Street. But it certainly is, uh, still, uh, full, go, go full-fledged into revitalization for the project at, for that, that district as we always have. There will be no change.
So with your recommendation, is there needs to be a resolution to reflect that?
Yes. Yes. So Old National would need, uh, a change in this resolution.
Thank you. I yield.
All right, Mr. Clerk, who's next in the queue? All right. Uh, thank you all. I do ju- I do just want to make note, we were, we are talking about, I began working with DCA-
I began working with DCA as a councilman for Old National. Um, and the original DDA was for, was to be for Old National precisely because it did not fit the Main Street criteria. So I hope that at some point, you know, we can work with you in the future to figure that out. Thank you all so much for this incredible presentation.
Thank you.
And.
And on that, can I just make one comment on that?
Yes, yes, please, go ahead.
As I said before, I wanna reiterate, we are the Office of Downtown Development, and so we are still your resource for any area in the city that you want our expertise, technical assistance, connections with. Um, so do not hesitate for Old National to reach out to us if there's anything that you need. We are not just the Office of Main Street, we are the Office of Downtown Development, and we wanna be a resource for anybody that needs us.
Absolutely, thank you so much. All right, uh, and with that, we are over time, I am going to entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved and seconded, let's take this vote by show of hands.
Accord that motion approved unanimously, we are adjourned at five twenty-nine P M.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the special call meeting for zoning and alcohol licenses. Mr. Clerk, please sound the roll.
So roll call for the five P M alcohol zoning public hearing. The Honorable Catherine Nefroy, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
Can we give it a minute, Mayor? Put him to clear out.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Here.
The Honorable Keo Shabibi Bell, District Five.
Present.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Round, District Six. The Honorable Linda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
Mayor Khalid.
All right, thank you. If those of you all exiting could make your, uh, exodus quietly as possible, we're gonna go ahead and start with this five o'clock meeting. All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the first item.
First item on tonight's agenda, alcohol license rezoning variance modification cases for presentation and public hearing only. It's letter A, public hearing, KZ twenty-four dash zero one-two and CV twenty-four dash zero zero-three's application by S E C C Land LLC M. Care of Hakeem Hilliard requesting rezoning from C one in the Cliftondale Overlay District, C U P, and A G one to A one Apartment Dwelling District at Zero Calhoun Circle to develop three hundred and fourteen multifamily units. The applicant is also seeking a concurrent variance to exceed the height restriction, no more than fifty feet, on twenty-seven point zero four acres of land. It's located in Council District Two, and there's a request for deferral of staff.
Um, I'm not too sure why this is, um, oh wait a minute, I need to recognize, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Attorney McClendon, did you wanna go ahead and speak on this item?
Uh, uh, there is a request for a deferral.
Okay, all right, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Gomes.
Well, we actually deferred it to, for the sixty days, I believe it was.
It was deferred at Planning Commission to their June hearing. So my suggestion would be to defer this to, uh, a date in July, either the eighth or the twenty-second.
Do we meet in July? Oh, we don't meet in June, okay, I just wanted to make sure, cause I couldn't understand why it wa, why it was back on, um, the agenda. Do we have a possible date, Corey, or Mr. McClendon, can you suggest a possible date?
July the twenty-second. If the, if the clerk can confirm that that's one of our correct meeting dates. He, he did confirm that, I'm sorry.
He did confirm?
Yes.
Okay, I, I would like to make a motion to accept the deferral for July twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-five.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion, seeing and hearing none, let's take this vote in the queue, make sure everyone has rolled over into the new queue.
We still have several folks that, uh, haven't, uh.
Okay, we'll, we'll do this one by show of hands, but just because this is a legal proceeding, I wanna make sure that we do all these in the queue.
Accord that motion approved, six-zero to defer to the July twenty-second zoning public hearing, sir. Yes.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item B, public hearing, KZ twenty-four dash zero-two-four. Application by Joy M- Mabane requesting a rezon from A G one to T R to build thirty-two townhomes at forty-nine sixty and forty-nine eighty, Calhoun Road, on four point eight-six acres, it's located in Council District One. Staff recommends denial, Planning Commission recommends denial.
Before, uh, we begin, I do wanna just read this statement fresh out of our zoning, uh, our zoning university. So this is not a community meeting. I hope you've all had all the community meetings you needed before this meeting, this hearing is a legal proceeding. So we have to follow legal precedents in form, and I would like, if I feel like we are straying from that, it is my duty as chair, after checking with our legal counsel, to restrain both constituents and my colleagues on council to keep us within the bounds of the law. That is our disclaimer. Thank you, zoning university. Mr. McClendon.
Thank you, um, staff recommendation is denial, planning commission recommendation is denial. I believe there's gonna be a motion from the district council member.
All right. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing. There's no public hearing? All right, then, uh, I will go to the district council person, Dr. R.
Uh, I move to withdraw, um, KZ twenty-four dash zero-two-four application by Joy Mabane for rezoning from A G one for townhomes.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, is everyone in the proper meeting? All right, we'll go ahead and take that vote.
Vote is open. That motion was approved unanimously, seven-zero to withdraw.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is item C, public hearing, KU twenty-four dash zero-one-nine. An application by Devon Fitz requesting a special use permit at forty-four forty-five Commerce Circle, Southwest Suite B ten to operate a pet crematory in the M two Fulton Industrial Business Overlay District within a thirty-three thousand five hundred square foot suite. It's located in Council District One, staff recommends approval conditional, Planning Commission recommends approval. Staff?
Thank you, this is an application for a pet crematory, uh, at four-four-four-five Commerce Circle. Uh, this is, um, in the Fulton Industrial Boulevard Overlay District. Staff's recommendation is approval conditional, Planning Commission recommendation is approval.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing on this matter. Is there, are there any speakers for, first of all, is the applicant present? All right, and are there any speakers for or against?
No, no, sir.
All right, the applicant may step forward, uh, you will have ten minutes, you don't have to use that entire time. Please start by stating your name and address. Your time starts now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Devon Fitz, and I am the applicant for case U two-four zero-one-nine, where I am requesting a special use permit for a pet crematory in the City of South Fulton, Council, uh, District One. And so, I had a presentation, I don't know if it can be thrown on the screen or not, uh, thank you. So the Pet Crematory will be Resting Rainbow Pet Memorials and Cremation. We can go to the next two slides, please. So who is Resting Rainbow of Atlanta? So Resting Rainbow of Atlanta is a pet memorial and cremation business that will be coming to the City of South Fulton in spring, early summer two thousand twenty-five. We are one of the most trusted and compassionate pet memorial and cremation centers, and we offer a full range of professional and dignified services in the pet care industry. Our mission is to honor families with dignity and respect while bringing comfort and understanding to you and your family in one of life's most difficult times, which could be the passing of a beloved animal. My name is Devon Fitz, and I would be the owner of Resting Rainbow of Atlanta. I'm an Atlanta native, University of Georgia graduate, and also a Pittsburgh Institute of Mortuary Science graduate. I have over twelve years of corporate experience, and I have over ten years of funeral service experience on the human side. And I am also a compassionate animal lover and owner of two myself. As mentioned, Resting Rainbow of Atlanta will be located at four-four-four-five Commerce Drive, Suite B ten, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-three-six. It is currently zoned properly, M two Heavy Industrial Fulton Industrial Business Overlay District, and I am requesting a special use permit to operate my business at this location. Next two slides, please. So the services that we will offer at Resting Rainbow of Atlanta, we will provide dignified, respectful, and private cremation services for families during the loss of their beloved pet at our state-of-the-art facility. What makes Resting Rainbow different from any other pet crematory in the state of Georgia, and really throughout the southeast of the nation, is that all of our crematory operators will be certified by the governing bodies over cremations. We also will be registered pet funeral directors, which they will go through those cases and those courses required for that certification. And then they will also be certified in pet bereavement at level one. Again, we will be offering a range of dignified and professional end-of-life care and services for animals and their families. There will be a variety of merchandise that can be purchased at the location to memorialize and remember those animals. We will also have access to professional counseling and therapy services as needed. And then, most importantly, we will partner with the community on outreach events, and also partner with other animal and industry-related providers in the community. An environmental and community update. So Resting Rainbow, we operate out of a state-of-the-art facility with an American A two fifty P two side-by-side cremary cremator. It operates on P L C controls, which are designed to operate efficiently and effectively. They have auto-correcting configurations. It is the quietest cremator of the industry, uh, which operates at about seventy to seventy-one decibels, which is equivalent to the sound of a washer, dryer, or a telephone ringing all loud. Um, we have the most efficient machines on the market, also the cleanings burning cremators on the market, which emit no odors, no smoke, no chemicals, et cetera. All of the staff, as mentioned, will be trained and certified by the manufacturer. And then there will be no noise and/or visible signs of a crematory being operated to the general public, as in our other locations in other states. Most people don't even know that the business is there until the service is needed. Um, we will operate also in accordance with all Georgia air quality and EPA laws and ordinances. Next slide, please. Next one, next one. So on January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, we held a public participation meeting at the Adamsville Collier Heights Library, which is located at three-four-two-four, M O K Drive Ju- Ju, M O K Junior Drive, Southwest Atlanta, Georgia, at six-thirty P M. Over two hundred and forty-six community informational postcards were mailed out. Um, we had no, we, to date, we've had no objections or concerns received from the general public and community. Um, the Planning Commission meeting was held on February nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, to which the Planning Commission gave a recommendation of approval, and then the staff recommendation, as mentioned earlier, approval, uh, conditional. And so on the screen, you can see again just an example of the postcards that were sent out to the two hundred and forty-six, uh, individuals within the required, um, distance to have that mailed out for community information. Next slide, please. So our location and site plan, so again, where this address is located, it is known as the Atlanta Trade Center. And so one thing, just to point out, there will be no exterior modifications made to the building for this business. Um, so again, there's gonna be no signs of a crematory operating here until services are needed from individuals in the community, but we will be operating out of this location. And then on the next slide, you're able to see what the inside of the building would look like. So majority of this layout is already there now. There will just be a couple of exterior, uh, or excuse me, interior minor modifications made to adjust to the operations required for the business. And so that is the end of this presentation, um, and I can take any questions or comments.
All right, the balance of this time you have, uh, and there are no speakers in opposition. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and go to council for questions and comments, beginning as is always our practice with the district representative, Dr. Rell.
Thank you. You had a family visiting room, and so is that where people wanna have a service for their pet? They have it there, or is that just to see, uh, the products that you're selling? Is that a showroom, or?
It's more so a showroom. So it's just to see the products that will be sold in the, um, in the crematory. And then, once we have their animal in our care, if they did want to come, just do one final viewing, just only allowing one to three individuals, they could do that before we perform our operations. So it's more so just a showroom, but if they wanted the opportunity to see, we would give them one last moment.
Okay, that, that was it, thank you, uh, for your presentation.
Thank you. All right, seeing and hearing, no further questions. We, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item, we will be voting on this at our next city council meeting, Tuesday, February the twenty-fifth. All right, Mr. Clerk.
It brings us to the la, last item on tonight's zoning public hearings agenda. Public hearing, KZ twenty-four dash zero-two-eight, an application by Century Communities Care of Gaskins plus LaCrau, requesting rezoning from C U P in the Cliftondale Overlay District to C U P to develop one hundred and seven single-family detached homes residential community on fifty-three point nine acres of land at thirty-one forty-three and thirty-thirty De Mooney Road, Zero Camp Creek Parkway, and Zero Hathaway Road. It's located in Council District Two, staff recommends approval conditional, Planning Commission recommends denial.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Regent McClendon, Managing Director of Community Development and Regulatory Affairs. This is a application, uh, to rezon from the community unit plan zoning district to the community unit plan zoning district. Uh, so, um, for, uh, the edification of the public, um, even though the, the, our, our C U P district is site plan specific, uh, so, um, in order for the, um, developer, uh, to develop according to a site plan that's different from the currently approved site plan, they have to come in and ask for a rezoning. Uh, so even though the zoning district would not change with this approval, um, the site plan would change. Uh, and, um, because this is site plan specific, uh, our recommendation will always have to be approval conditional, if it is approval, because it will be conditioned upon, uh, the approved site plan. So staff's recommendation is approval conditional. Uh, I will note that, um, well, before I say that, Planning Commission recommendation is denial. Uh, I will note that this, um, plan is different from what was originally submitted, uh, at the beginning of this development. Uh, I believe the developer has, um, reduced the number of units, uh, and they have worked, um, with the community on some, uh, additional conditions that they will, will be presenting, uh, and staff will be reviewing those as well.
All right, the applicant is present, do we have, oh, my mic just got out, the applicant is present, do we have any speakers against?
Uh, we have one against, then we have the applicant plus two speakers on support.
All right, I think you know how this goes, Ms. McCully, welcome back.
You're welcome, good evening.
Ten minutes, please start by stating your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Michelle McCully, I am with Gaskins LaCrau. We're located at thirty-four seventy-five Corporate Way in Duluth, Georgia. It's my pleasure to be before you this evening. Do have a presentation, thank you, Corey. Um, if you'll go to the next slide, please. So this is a record, a rezoning from C U P, as just mentioned by the clerk, if we go to the next slide. This is a rezoning of fifty-three point nine acres for the development of a single-family detached community of one hundred and seven single-family homes. This plan is consistent with the Rural Neighborhood Conference of Land Use Designation of one to two units per acre. We are at one point nine-nine dwelling units per acre. If you go to the next slide, please. This is your city council district map, it's kinda hard to see, but in District Two, Councilwoman Gomes' district, there is a yellow star. That is the location of this rezoning request. Next slide, please. So here's an aerial image, so this is at the north end of De Mooney Road. If you were, you know, go between Stonewall Tail Road and Butner, De Mooney, um, sort of has a crest at the top. It's where this yellow star is, it's currently undeveloped property. It's at the intersection of De Mooney and. It's at the intersection of De Mooney and Hathcock, which is an existing gravel road in the city of South Fulton Maintenance. Go to the next slide, please. So on your left is the zoning map for the city of South Fulton. The property, as you see, is in that peach color, it's zone C U P. As Mr. McClendon, um, just explained to you, it's zone C U P, but with a different site plan. So we're rezoning to C U P to establish a new site plan for the project. On the right is the, um, comprehensive plan, which is rural neighborhood for this project. It is one to two units per acre, which we are consistent with, so we are not asking to amend the land use plan. Go to the next slide, please. So this intersection is, this map shows you where the roadway connects with Hathcock Road. So on the, on the screen right is where you see there's a sharp angle where the existing Hathcock Road veers off to the right. We've had preliminary discussions with both the county, um, sorry, city engineer and the Department of Public Works about what this roadway improvement will look like. They've asked us to realign this intersection to make it safer, so it's not at such an acute angle. So I will show that as part of our site plan, but as a part of this project, the developer will be, um, in instituting an intersection improvement at this roadway. If you go to the next slide, please. So here's our site plan, it shows a hundred and seven homes. I want to pay attention, yeah, sure to pay attention that this community will have an amenity center with a clubhouse and playground. Um, this also shows the new realigned intersection of Hathcock Road and De Mooney Road. As I mentioned, Hathcock currently is a gravel road. Uh, we will be improving it all the way to the end, the second entrance of this community. So that road, which would now is gravel, will be improved to a concrete surface. Um, lastly, um, and this came as a result of, um, communication with the community, this amenity center will have a school bus stop. There will be a t- pullout for the school bus to be able to leave the lane of traffic. So, um, it'll lead the lane of traffic and parents can then, you know, lead their children or the children can walk to the school bus and then safely get on and off. The school bus will come in the northern entrance, do the pullout, stop there for picking up students, and then, um, exit through the other exit. So that came about as a result of communications with the community. Next slide, please. Um, I know that there are speakers here, so I'm not gonna go through all the conditions and I would ask whether you'd like me to read them or not. But we've had extensive and very positive communications with the Cliftondale community. I'd like to thank Mr. Carter and Mr. Mitchell for putting in a lot of time and effort and meeting with us. Also, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Gums, she's been engaged since the very beginning and really held our feet to the fire to make sure that we met with the community and came to what we believe are sixteen conditions, um, for the approval. This community, um, has gone through lots of changes and we're very respectful and century communities, there's representatives here tonight, want to make sure that this is a positive community for Cliftondale. Um, and with that, since there are, uh, if you go to the last slide, this is the color rendering of the community, just to show you what this community will have extensive green space, um, throughout. But I think I'd like to, um, keep the rest of my time in case there are additional questions I need to respond to from the community. But we recommend that you, or staff's recommendation of approval.
All right, thank you, there is five minutes and twenty six seconds left for you on the clock. Mr. Clerk, please sound the names of those in opposition as you all come forward. Please make sure you start your comments by stating your name and address.
You want to just, since time, you want to do the support first?
Yes, oh, I'm sorry, there are people in support as well.
Yes.
Please come forward.
So Mr. Chris Whittaker and Marcus Carter. Scott.
Hi there, my name is Marcus Carter, uh, live three four five Lawrence Place, and I'm a president of Cliftondale Community Club. Uh, I would, uh, also concur, uh, with Ms. McCauley that we've had a lot of time, both face to face, uh, as well as Zoom time and even, uh, a lot of correspondence back and forth about this project, because we're trying to meet a good, uh, balance between meeting the, the desires and the needs of the future, uh, residents. They'll be in this area as well as the current ones who are surrounding that, as well as a good opportunity for, uh, development to be established in this area. So a lot of the things in our conditions are, uh, there we are in line with. I think our main concern, one of our main concerns remaining has to do with, with the, uh, the bus stop, because that was an issue of going into the development. And so the, the creativity of doing something different there is something we wanted to make sure is, is seen and taken, uh, taken, uh, as a review. I think the timing issue has been a, an obstacle because of being able to get, uh, we have not been able to get the viewing or the input from the public safety or transportation pertaining to that area. And so that's one of the key things we think is important. We did want to, uh, have an opportunity for there to be a community agreement to make sure that, because there has been history in which we've had developments and zoning conditions approved, but then later on, they've been changed or modified. So we wanted to make sure there's consistency in trying to meet the, the common goal here. And a community agreement, uh, was a, an obstacle in which the company did not want to agree with that since majority of the conditions were incorporated with that. So that's, those are just some i- issues there, but we are pleased with the possible outcome and what the development can be for the community. Thank you.
Is there another speaker in support?
No, no, that's it, they have two minutes and thirty seconds left.
All right, okay, we're ready for the opposition now, I'm sorry, please come forward. Uh, those in opposition, state your name and address. You all will have ten minutes, so you may want to reserve some of the balance of your time for those of you all who, for people who might be behind you in opposition, your time starts now.
Stanley Knowles, thirty two oh three De Mooney Road. Um, I apologize, I put down opposition, I'm not totally in opposition because I know this is something that we've been working on. I've been along with Marcus and, um, Mr. Storm Mitchell, trying to put this all together. Um, I guess a couple of the issues that I have are, one, uh, and you all probably know from your subdivisions, the one of the biggest problems we have with some of these subdivisions is getting the support of people coming out to the meetings, the community meetings. And they have ten spaces allotted for parking for the subdivision of a hundred and seven units. That's gonna more or less deter people when they get ready to come to these meetings, they're gonna say, hey, you know, there's no parking, I'm not gonna come. And then you end up with these communities going down because there's not enough involvement in, into making the community that much better because nobody knows what's going on. But that's a concern that I have. Uh, the other concern is that we are setting a precedence here. Um, and we have in the past had a lot of subdivision, you all, I'm a past president of Cliftondale also, uh, Community Club. Uh, we've always had, uh, the majority of the time, we've had developers who have signed our agreements just so that we have something to come back on that we have, we know that we're working together. And as Marcus said, things, if they change, we have something to fall back on, on paper, not just verbally. And so, uh, there's the concern is that we would like to see this, um, um, agreement signed so that we have something on paper that says, hey, we're gonna do what we say we're gonna do because once it's done and they're gone, we're stuck with whatever's there. The new homeowners, the, the city of South Fulton, we're stuck with whatever we're left with, and we have to pick up the mess or clean up the, the, anything that's left. So in order to not have that happen, we would like to see an agreement between Cliftondale Community Club and the developer to make sure that we have everything down so we have some kind of way to come back at them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles and Mr. Carter, I appreciate it. I'd just like to talk to the development agreement portion. Typically, development agreements, um, are for items that can't be enforced by city staff. We carefully crafted these conditions so that we feel confident, um, that staff will be able to implement all of these conditions. And as these conditions, this is, as Mr. McClendon said, this is site plan specific. This property will be tied to these sixteen conditions moving forward. Whoever developed it, develops it, if century communities decides that they don't want to move forward, whoever comes in and wants to develop according to the site plan will have to meet these conditions. So that's one reason for there not to be an additional development agreement with this case. Um, as for the parking at the amenity, um, based on my understanding of the development code for the size of this community, which is a hundred and seven homes, um, we're, uh, the requirement would be for five parking spaces, um, at the, um, clubhouse. Uh, we are providing, we had initially showed eight, we were able to fit two more in, we have ten parking spaces. I mean, I think the hope would be that this community is oriented such that most people can walk to their, um, clubhouse, but, uh, we feel that that parking is sufficient.
I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and open it up to counsel for questions and comments, beginning as always as our custom with the district representative, which I see is Councilwoman Gums.
Yes. All right, well, we're, we're finally closer. Um, and Mrs. Knowles and Marcus, thank you all for the work that you all have put in to, uh, get us to this point. And I wanted to speak directly to Mr. Knowles in regards to the community benefits agreement. When we're sitting on council and we understand the conditions, when we're reading them into the record, it becomes the record. So, you know, if a developer leaves and makes some type of agreement with Cliftondale Community Club, you know, the city can't enforce that if it's agreement between you and Cliftondale Community Club. So the conditions that, um, have been stated, which you all, I believe, are in favor of, is being read into the record and provided. So that is how the city will be able to enforce and keep the developers on track, even if it is sold to another developer, which we're hoping there's not. But in case it happens, we can always go back to this document and say, this is what you are supposed to do. And I've done that on a lot of projects, so I just want you to know that, that this is the confidence that you have by us having it in the record. Um, so again, um, I'm really thrilled about how far we've gotten. I don't see in the conditions, and I could be missing it, about the school bus. Am I missing the school bus stop?
It's, it's shown on the site plan, it's not a condition that was written in, uh, since we're conditioned to the site plan, we show it. And I should say, you, staff just received these conditions in the site plan today. Our last meeting with Cliftondale was yesterday, so I'm happy to read the conditions if you choose into the record or they were received by staff.
They're, they're received, I have them, so, um, it'll be provided, but, uh, it's quite a bit of, uh, I think that, um, and they have a copy of it, correct?
They do, yes.
Okay, so you don't?
Do I have it wrong, is there a? Okay, yeah, there is a, a part of number eight says, there shall be a bus stop provided as shown on the site plan, right.
Perfect, okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure.
And we did put the language on there, or as approved by the city of South Fulton Transportation Engineer. Just because, um, Mr. Valenzuela has not looked at this site plan, but in case he wants to design that pullout differently, we can. That would happen at land disturbance.
Absolutely, okay. All right, I think we're in a good place, thank you again.
Councilman, Councilman Sebastian? Somebody release the mayor's mic.
Thank you, um, Mayor Proton. Um, first of all, I want to compliment, um, both the applicant and the community for working together through what seemed to be a long process to come up where everyone is relatively happy with what is gonna happen here. And Councilwoman Gums, thank you as well for being part of that process. And I actually took some beating for this development last night in my community meeting. And it was fascinating because the question was about something I know we, um, we talked about, uh, the first go around, and that, that is the proximity of the housing to the flood plain in this development. So for the benefit of people who might be listening, can you, can you outline for us what those conditions are in terms of proximity to the flood plain and how we, um, intend to address this to prevent future, future, uh, any future flooding?
Right.
On the normal conditions or even, um, you know, heavier flooding that is probably forecasted to climate change?
So, um, Corey, if you'll bring up the last s- slide, the color rendering, you'll see that you can see the streams on this property. This property flows towards, um, Camp Creek. So the city of South Fulton has some of the strictest stream buffer ordinances in the metro area. There's a seventy five foot undisturbed buffer along all stream banks, which you see is the dotted lines around the creeks. And then there's a twenty five foot additional impervious setback. With a small exception of a tiny portion of the back corner of two lots, um, we will have no encroachment into the impervious setback. So all of the storm water for this site, nothing will be impacting individual future homeowner lots. They will be well outside of the streams and the development itself will not impact these existing streams. So as we go through the development process, um, we will, the existing patterns of stormwater runoff will not be changed by the development of the sites, of the site.
Okay, good, thank you, I, I did, I did give kudos to the people who were designing this and our engineers that we, that I know we would not be putting people in all their property in the future. Um, so I just wanted, I just wanted to mention that and put that on the record, that it's something that we have looked at through the process.
Yes, thank you.
We have, anyone else has a question? Okay, so at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we, um, uh, close, do, oh, this was public hearing, right?
Yes, it's closed.
Okay, I, I move that we recess to executive session for, uh, personnel, real estate, um, cybersecurity and litigation.
Being moved in second, um, I'll take this vote by a show of hands.
Okay, I record that, approved seven zero, we are recessed at six oh five P M.
We are recessed at six oh five PM.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion.
I move to reconvene from executive session.
Moved and properly second, can we take this vote by a show of hands? Okay.
We are reconvened at seven fifty-two P M.
Okay, Mister Clerk, were there any actionable items that must take, requires, that may require a public vote?
Yes, ma'am, I believe there was some action taken in executive session and the city attorney will put those record, on the record.
In accordance with section one dash three zero zero eight, titled Defense of Elected Officials, Officers and Employees in Payment of Claims and Judgments, section D, grounds for refusal of defense of section three, it reads upon receipt of a request to provide defensive acclaim brought against an employee or elected official, the city shall first present the claim to Germa. If it is determined that Germa will not cover the defense, um, a defense will not be provided to an elected official, the city attorney shall present the matter to council for determination as to whether defensive acclaim or proceeding will be bained under this ordinance. In accordance with this section, the council has decided not to cover the defense of the mayor's fees. I did receive an invoice in excess of twelve thousand dollars to cover the mayor's defense fees and the council has voted um, not to cover that invoice.
And what is your point of order?
I believe we took a census, I think we have to vote out here, am I correct?
You can, you can vote out here or I can just state it, but yes, you can vote out here.
Oh, no, you carry this.
So at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the measure as sounded by the city attorney.
Second. Moved and properly second, can we take this vote by a show of hands? Oh, my apologies, Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I yield.
Uh, just for clarity, the fees for the mayor are twelve thousand dollars?
That was the invoice that I got, it was an invoice in excess of twelve thousand.
Okay, and what is the total of the invoices for the plaintiff?
I don't have that information in front of me.
Okay, my latest count was ninety-four thousand dollars, I just would like to have that for the record at some future time. How much has been spent on the other side? Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilman Willis for her point of order.
Will you please direct the question if the uh, what we voted on is an invoice for your attorney fees? That's what we voted on, that's what we discussed. Uh, we are not voting on plaintiff invoices or fees. So my question is that germane to what we just voted on.
Madam Parliamentar- Parliamentarian?
Not exactly, um, it was a part of his discussion, but what is on the floor at the moment is the invoice representing the mayor's uh, defense fees.
All right, well, thank you, uh, let's go ahead and take this vote by a show of hands. Record that motion s- seven, seven zero unanimously to approve the motion as read by the city attorney. All right, is there any other items in executive session for which a, all right, I will take a motion to adjourn executive session? We got it adjourned, yeah. You're in executive session.
I move to adjourn the executive session. Oh, I.
Adjourn the zoning public hearing.
I move that we adjourn the public hearing, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, any discussion, seeing and hearing none, let's take this vote by a show of hands. Record that motion approved unanimously, we are adjourned at seven fifty-seven P M. I'm gonna go ahead and call to order the seven o'clock meeting of city council. Uh, could we get that video, please? We cannot get it, all right, Mister Clerk, please sound the roll. Good evening, Mister Mayor, members of council and the general public at large, this is the city council regular meeting for March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, seven P M. It's a roll call, the Honorable Catherine Nefroyal, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmen Lita Gomes, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Kiyosha B. Bell, District Five.
Present.
The Honorable Natasha Williams Brown, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Lynda B. Pritchett, District Seven.
Here.
Present. All right, thank you, all right, welcome everyone, sorry for our dilatory start, welcome to the regular council meeting. Uh, we normally have these meetings the second and fourth Tuesday, but we did make adjustments for city councils to travel. However, we will be returning to our regular meeting schedule, second and fourth Tuesdays next week, Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five. And whenever we meet, you can join us here at our lovely new city council chambers at fifty-four forty Fulton Industrial Boulevard, three zero three three six, or online at youtube dot com slash at City of South Fulton. Before we begin, I do want uh, to make a request to amend the agenda, one of the proclamations was left off for our award-winning, three-time state championship Tri-Cities High School Bulldogs boys basketball team who is here with us tonight. So um, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda to include this proclamation presentation.
I, I haven't, I didn't even make the motion, just second. I, um, huh, huh, with what, I didn't make the motion. I move that we amend the agenda to include the uh, East Point, Georgia Tri-Cities High School, um, uh, proclamation.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded, any discussion? Uh, I have discussion, uh, but I'm gonna save it for the proclamation presentation. All right, let's take this vote, I'm sorry, uh, council, Mayor Protim Pritchett.
Mister Mayor, is it true that you attended Tri-Cities High School?
I am a City of South Fulton resident, a Tri-Cities High School graduate, and there are actually some old Nat guys on that team, so shout out to the Nat. All right, all right, let's take a vote by a show of hands. Record that motion approved unanimously, seven zero. Awesome, all right, uh, please sound the first proclamation.
Point of order.
The chair recognizes Councilman Gomes for her point of order.
Are we gonna do invocation, because we didn't, you just asked for us to add the proclamation, invocation is before the proclamation?
Uh, sure, we can do that, I mean, it's, it's, it, can we just do those two things and get to the proclamation, because it is eight o'clock on a school night? All right, uh, Mister Clerk, please sound the first item. Next item on tonight's agenda is the invocation by our city chaplain.
Yet with a steady beat, have not our weary feet come to the place for which our fathers sighed. God, we adore you, we thank you, we bless you, we magnify you, we're grateful for this day and this time, this gathering, this core group of thought leaders and activists and civic leaders and servants in your presence, we're grateful for the community coming together. Now we pray, God, that your presence be here, guide us, keep us, we invoke your will and your desire for our community and for our fair city. Let all the decisions be made before your glory, in the name of the Messiah, we pray, amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mister Clerk, please sound the first proclamation. Yes, sir, tonight, we have two proclamation presentations, the first is a proclamation presentation honoring Pastor Bola Adipodju. And this is sponsored by council member Sebastian and the full council.
Oh, call your husband and your gang up with you. All right, in this um, uh, Women's History Month, it gives me great pleasure to present this proclamation to this awesome woman of the fourth district of the City of South Fulton. And it's sponsored by the mayor and the full council of our city. Whereas the City of South Fulton honors and celebrates the extraordinary life and work of Pastor Bola Adipodju, fondly referred to as Pastor Bola. Pastor Bola is a visionary leader and compassionate advocate for women and youth in the South Fulton community. And whereas Pastor Bola is the founder of Women and Purpose, a nonprofit organization dedicated to empowering female youth, youth, young adults and women, enabling them to become catalysts for positive change in their community. And whereas Pastor Bola has made it her life's mission to assemble a diverse army of women of all ages, races and ethnic backgrounds, nurturing their invaluable voices. And whereas she is also the founder of PBA Global Outreach, an evangelistic platform committed to winning souls for the Lord and advocating for women beyond the church. And whereas through her public appearances on radio, television and social media, she has effectively amplified her message of empowerment, proclaiming the belief that everyone possesses untapped potential and that with faith, determination, no obstacle is insurmountable. And whereas she has initiated numerous service and ministry programs, including Women on Purpose Outreach, Project Reach, the Gathering of Eagles Youth and Women Empowerment Conference, the Total Makeover Women Leaders Summit and Youth Explosion, all of which seek to restore hope and uplift those in need. And whereas Pastor Bola has authored nine impactful books, including her latest publication Glory in the Wilderness, which shares her gripping personal narrative of resilience through adversity and has inspired countless readers. And whereas academically, she holds a Bachelor of Arts in Economics from Spelman College and a Masters in Business Administration from Atlanta University, along with distinguished career as an educator, a human resource professional. Pastor Bola is not only a leader, but also a devoted wife to Doctor Odatunde Adipodju and a loving mother and grandmother. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the City of South Fulton Council honors Pastor Bola Adipodju for her unwavering dedication, compassion, service and monument- monumental impact in, on the lives of countless individuals and do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March nineteenth as Pastor Bola Adipodju Day in the City of South Fulton.
I would like to say a very big thank you to um, South Fulton, City of South Fulton, to the mayor and to my councilman, um, councilman J.C. Sebastian. I, um, today's a very emotional day for me, um, because it marks the fifth year anniversary of my kidnapping by Muslim jihadists in the jungle of Nigeria. So um, it just happens to be on a day. So it just happens to be on a day that I am being honored today, and I know it's divinely ordained. I'm not supposed to be here today because we were supposed to die in that jungle. And I am resilient. I have given my life to serving humanity. And the devil does not have any last word. He will not have any last word over my life and over the lives of those who I lead as a woman leader. So I dedicate this proclamation to first, God Almighty, who has preserved my life, to my husband, and two of my siblings, one of which was in that jungle with me, Ife Lulua, that's her name, and my deceased sister Jennifer Lee. I want to thank you, Councilmen, for all that you do in the South Fulton. Our prayers are with you. You are a great man of God. And I believe that your tenure will continue to make a greater impact in South Fulton County. Thank you, everyone, and God bless you.
I don't think the whole church is here, but the whole church is invited.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
The next item on tonight's agenda is the presentation of a proclamation to the Tri-Cities High School Bulldogs, Class Five A State Basketball Champions.
As they come, come on up, come on up, come on up. I don't, they're not shy on the court, but they've been shy tonight. As they come, I'm going to say, it's nights like tonight. All right, it's nights like tonight that I am so proud, so proud to be born, raised, and educated here in the City of South Fulton, a product of Fulton County schools. I see some of my, some of my Tri-Cities alumni. My bro, Rob Mack, is here. So we go down every state championship to watch this game. I unfortunately could not be there this year. I was in Selma for the sixtieth anniversary of the bridge crossing. You're going to be seeing some incredible video from that, as well as some incredible, incredible video from these players. We had a lot of fun in the mayor's office while we were waiting. And I am going to give one of these. That's for you to take home, sir. And I'm going to read this. Whereas the City of South Fulton seeks to highlight examples of black excellence that inspire youth across the diaspora. And whereas the Tri-Cities High School TCHS Bulldogs have battled on-court challenges and off-court adversity to achieve their third state championship in eight years, led by the dynamic first-team, all-region, six-foot-two-inch sophomore point guard Trey Keith, six-foot-six wing and Georgia Southern University early commit Sean Van Dorn, senior guards Andrew Jones and Carby Martin, whose indefatigable defense and double-digit rebounding made the Bulldogs an unsolvable problem at both ends of the court, and six-eight forward junior Jalen Wingfield, the team's leading rebounder and defensive enforcer, who has already received thirteen D-one offers. Whereas the winningest basketball team in Georgia also includes energetic sophomore point guard Khalid Jones, junior guards Tate Thurman, Dylan Johnson, and Chris Cottle. Sophomore forward Lonnie Brown, sophomore center John Morris, freshman point guard Corbin Wilburg, and freshman center Kamari Greer, and managers Amaya Williams, Shaylen Batty, and Sincere Bailey. And with over four hundred career wins, TCH basketball coach Omari Forts is not only a father of two, but a father figure to countless more. With assistant coaches Anthony Dorsey and Garrett Henry, and coaches Ray Goolsbee, Keyshawn Williams, Keon Curtis, and Jameson Williams, these men have mentored thousands of boys personally, while leading them professionally to three state titles, five Final Four appearances, and regional championships since South Fulton Cityhood eight years ago. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of South Fulton do hereby proclaim tomorrow, March twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, as TCHS Bulldogs Basketball Day in the City of South Fulton, Georgia. Speech, speech.
I'd like to first and foremost say thank you to the city council, mayor, for having us and hosting us and showing us this wonderful time, this wonderful proclamation. I'd like to also thank, because I missed last time, most importantly, our parents, our parents who are consistently devoted to making sure our guys get to Tri-Cities at six a.m. practice. We practice at six a.m. year-round. So that's a major commitment from you all, and we're thankful for you. My coaching staff, who has put up with me for the last six months, and these young men who, first semester, nobody on the team had an F, and everybody was well over three-point-oh GPA. So very proud to be the leader of this program and to be a voice that these young men respect, hopefully, and can look forward to supporting them for the rest of their lives. Thank you very much. We were fortunate enough to beat Woodward Academy in the state championship game. So that was, that was, that was actually quite sweet for it to be them that we ended up getting the victory over, so that was a little cherry on top.
Parents, you come up. We want you in the picture too. Come on, parents.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is public comments. We did receive at least one card. So I'll read the record, into the record, the rules for public comment this evening. Any City of South Fulton resident or business owner who wishes to address the mayor and city council and offer public comment on any item on the agenda may do so during the public comment period of the meeting. Any county, state, and federal elected official should be allowed to speak regardless of city of residence. Comments should be limited to two minutes per speaker. Public comments should be limited to only those items appearing on the current city council meeting agenda. The person or City of South Fulton business owner desiring to speak should rise, address the city council, and when recognized, state their name, residential or business address, the agenda item that they are addressing, and the city council district in which they reside. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole and not to any member. To ensure the opportunity of all those desiring to speak before city council, there is no yielding of time to another speaker. Speakers may not employ obscenities or threats of violence in their comments. Speakers may not use public comments to campaign for political office, either for themselves or on behalf of other candidates, for the purposes of eliminating political influence on city employees and encouraging orderly and efficient meetings. Madam Mayor Pro Tim, I received one speaker card of Ms. Glenda Collins.
Oh, thank you. We did have a Zoom meeting on Monday, the seventeenth. And a few things came out of it. One fact is the portion that's zone heavy industrial, a statement was made that apartments will be built in that area. The council, I suppose, has always, has been approached in putting a gas station in that area. And we did get a condition out of it, I suppose, which would be a traffic light. But we still have traffic issues in the area. Because there's one thing about it, you cannot control trucks and the drivers. So hopefully, something can be resolved with the traffic issues that does not decimate our quality of life when we're driving the highway. And I see on the application that there's still a reduction in the buffer, but it's written. And I suppose it will be changed. So it appears as though that the taxpayers in the community.
Ms. Collins, your time.
It's time. Thank you.
Madam Mayor Pro Tim, that completes public comment for this evening.
Okay, and the next item?
It's council comments.
So let's start with Councilwoman Rao. Okay, so we'll go to, we'll go to Councilwoman Gums.
Okay, well, I guess I need to be ready. First of all, on, this has been a very, very busy week in, in the city. Yes, no, on March the seventeenth, we hosted our district to Senior Health Day, which is open to all seniors. And of course, we had an eighties theme, so it was absolutely adorable seeing the seniors dress up in some nostalgic outfits with the leg warmers and everything and working out. And we also had a health fair at the same time. There were great resources that was provided, but that was a very fun time. I do encourage seniors that are all across the city to come out and take advantage of this class that we are offering at Sandtown on Mondays and Wednesdays at ten a.m. Again, you'll make friends, you'll have lots of fun, you may get people to come in and exercise, such as Dr. Rao. She'll pull on her hat and stuff, but we actually have a good time and you make a lot of friends. So I would love to continue to see that program go. Also too, we held a town hall last night at Wolf Creek Library where we had our state representative, State Senator Rashawn Kim, Senator Jason Estevez, and also Representative, State Representative Robert Dawson. We had a very engaged conversation. Residents were able to get their questions answered and find out what's actually going on down at the Gold Dome. As well as we had our special guest, which was our city manager, who did a phenomenal job highlighting all of the great things that are happening in the City of South Fulton and not just in District Two. that are happening in the city of South Fulton and not just in District Two, so we have a lot to be, um, proud of. So again, I, I want to thank all of the residents came out. It was a very packed house and, um, I'm excited about our, our future. Also too, on March the twenty-fourth, which is, um, probably in about five short days, uh, we will be hosting a homestead exemption town hall, uh, that will be hosted with, um, Fulton County Commissioner Marvin Arrington Jr. at the Wolf Creek Library. That will take place from six to seven. We have a shorter time because it's, uh, hard for us to get out of the library by eight, so we've cut it down for an hour. But I know there are a lot of residents that still have questions about what's happening with homestead exemption. The deadline is April the first, uh, to apply, so I felt it was important for us to have an additional town hall. And also too, on March the twenty-ninth, we will have a free recycling and shred day, um, at Clifton Dell Park from nine AM to twelve PM. It is spring cleaning time. I don't know if I was supposed to say that, but it is spring cleaning time and we would love for you to get yourselves together and take advantage of this free recycling day. Also too, we have two more things. April, I'm sorry, three. April the first, we will be, uh, hosting a ribbon cutting for the Cochran Road and, uh, Bridge. We actually did a groundbreaking, was that less than a year ago, J.C.? It was less than a year ago, and we are ready to cut the ribbon. The project has, uh, been completed, so we're excited. I hope you can join us at ten AM on April the first. Also, on April the seventeenth, uh, we will be doing the ribbon cutting for Enin Road sidewalks. There's a lot going on in the city. We are excited about that. I think that was a year ago as well, um, that we all on the council took a picture, um, and I'll make sure I bring that up next time. But, uh, we will be having that at ten AM. And then lastly, we will be hosting, I know Women's History Month is in, uh, March, but we ran out of time. So on April the seventeenth, we will be hosting our annual, um, Women's, um, Business Mixer. And we have a very good special guest that will talk about branding, uh, yourselves as business entrepreneurs and things of that nature. So looking forward to that. That will be at five PM at the, uh, tea shop. And that concludes all of my comments, and thank you. Am I turning?
Councilwoman Ral.
Thank you. Uh, I want to encourage everybody to come out on tomorrow night at the Southwest Arts Center. From five thirty to eight PM, we have a, the Power to Heal Documentary screening about Medicare and the Civil Rights Revolution. That's in partnership with Grady Healthcare. Uh, there will be free labs that include prostate, uh, cancer screenings via blood tests, for blood pressure checks and, and diabetes testing. There will also be a tack, talk back and health equity discussion panel. This event is free to the public. I want to encourage you to come out. On March twenty-sixth, at the Sandtown Rec Center, I am hosting an event, uh, Resources for Caregivers of Persons with Long COVID and Other Chronic Illnesses in Partnership with Call for Caring. That event is at eleven AM. We will have presenters from Emory University and the American Heart Association. This, this event is also free to the public. And finally, I want to encourage you to join the Office of Solicitor General Keith Gammage for Freedom Fridays. On March twenty-first, they will be at the South Fulton Annex to receive, uh, you can receive a free copy of your criminal history. You can stop by nine, between nine and three PM. And they have a follow-up record restriction event that will be held Sunday, April fifth, from eleven to two at the Truist Andrew and Walter Young Family Promise Center at, on Camelton Road. So those are a couple of community events I wanted to make you aware of. And, uh, stay tuned, uh, we will be having, uh, ribbon cutting for the Danforth sidewalks. You know, those have been, um, in, in the works for a while, so we're really excited that we'll be able to open that. So stay tuned for those who receive my newsletters and look out on my social media. Thank you.
Councilwoman Willis.
Thank you for recognizing me. I want to thank all residents that came out to my town hall, Ms. Subedan and staff, for, um, our first town hall, um, at Woke Mall Park on last Thursday. We also had a packed house, and so I'm glad to see that residents are, um, engaged from across the city. We also had Coffee with the Cop the next day, um, at Chick-fil-A in my district. Um, I also want to remind residents, um, in the Woke Mall Park area, Clifton Dell area, Red Oak area, all throughout the city, Red Oak District Community Cleanup will be Saturday, March twenty-ninth, from nine to twelve PM. We also will have Red Oak District Community Market, um, every first Friday from four-thirty to eight-thirty PM. Um, and that is located at Cylon Church. We also will be having a summer hiring fair. Um, we will have representatives from our fire, because they do hire at eighteen. Uh, we will have our own HR department, because we do have a paid and, um, unpaid internship program. We will have companies that are within our city, WorkSource, Georgia. We will have the, uh, Fulton County Board of Election registering all kids who are eligible to register to vote at Woke Mall Park on April fifth, from ten AM to two PM. Um, we, our next town hall will be economic development centric. We will have representatives from our school board rep, Ms. Francesca Warren, to talk about, um, how economic development, um, relates to, um, school, I mean, how economic development relates to schools and how development relates to schools. Um, and we will have our Economic Development, um, uh, Main Street Program Director there for giving you updates, um, on Red Oak Historic District. And we will also have Mrs. Davis there to give you the updates on our overall economic development efforts. We have a new development I'm excited that I've been working with to bring to, uh, city of South Fulton. Our community meeting is going to be at Enin Church. Um, it is on April seventh at six PM. Uh, Fifth Third Bank, um, is forthcoming to the city of South Fulton, so make sure you plan to attend and welcome them to our community, um, and ask any, and be prepared to ask any questions you may have. March thirty-first is when we will have our Comprehensive Development Plan Meeting. One of the most important things that we are doing in the city of South Fulton, so make sure you all come to Woke Mall Park at six-thirty and give your input on what you would like to see develop in our city in the future. Lastly, but not least, um, the homestead exemption is April first, so make sure that you attend one of the, um, tax workshops and get your paperwork in to get your exemptions, homestead exemptions and senior exemptions by, before April first. And don't forget to fill out the freestanding Emergency Department of City of South Fulton Survey for the new Grady Health System Survey that, um, we need everybody to fill out. Close mouths don't get fed. We know we need more medical, um, medical systems in the city of South Fulton and in the region. So please fill the survey out so they can know how to meet our needs. And thank you, uh, Mr. Jarvis Adams, for your decades of service to the South Fulton commu- community, uh, both at Camp Creek Middle School and Westlake High School. Uh, Mr. Jarvis Adams was the principal of Westlake High School and Bittersweet, we, um, we wished him farewell. He's moving on to an elevation, um, in the Cav County. We lost him in Fulton County, but he is moving to a well-deserved elevation as a district, um, leader, oh, in the Cav County. We want to thank you for his years of service and molding our children and contributing to our children's education here in the city of South Fulton. Thank you so much. Um, and also Women's History Month. Lastly, I promise, Mayor Pro Tem, we want to congratulate our city of South Fulton resident, Mrs. Bishop Suzie Jones, who was elevated to Archbishop on last Saturday. Uh, I am very proud of her, and, um, I just, uh, wish her the best in her, um, elevation and her spiritual journey. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Um, gives me great pleasure to wish all females across our city a very happy Women's History Month. As I've previously said, during the formation of the city of South Fulton, there were mostly females there. There were a lot of us males there too. But if we go by head count, they were mostly females and the females were fearless in the fight. So just want to thank you all and, of course, having the pleasure to serve up here with six of my colleagues on council, uh, and also working with our city manager, our city attorney, our assistant city manager, and others are all female who are continuing to make a valuable contribution to our city. So happy Women's History Month.
Thank you.
Now wear our robes. He usually give us flowers.
Yeah, wear ours.
He doesn't call us now.
I didn't have time to pick the flowers up, but for your knowledge.
Next week, next week.
Uh, it's coming next week. Okay. All right. All right, moving on. Congratulations to another set of powerful women in the Ford District, that is the Creekside Girls Basketball Team that will be presenting a proclamation to them at their parade on April first. And the girls went thirty-two and oh, a perfect season to bring home the four A State Championship. So congratulations to the Creekside Basketball Girls. Um, it's a busy, it's going to be a busy month in the Ford, in the Ford District. On April fifth, we actually have a recycling and shred shredding day as well at Cedar Grove Park. So we'll be having two on either side of the city, so you have no excuse not to do a spring cleanup as someone just said before. Also on April fifth, at two o'clock until four o'clock, at sixty, six thousand and five Linmark Way, we'll be having the fourth installation of fire and ice in partnership with our fire department. And I, this is one of the events that, um, I kicked off when I got here, and I am always pretty excited to come and teach kids and adults about fire safety. A few weeks ago, we had six fires, I believe, in one day in the city of South Fulton, some of which could have been avoided with some knowledge. First year in which we did this, a thirteen-year-old house caught on fire, and he told his parents, "I knew how to put out the fire based on what I learned when I went up to fire and ice," and he showed up there. All right, so, so again, I'm looking forward to seeing the community come out and support this event. On April third, before we get to the fifth, we're actually having our comprehensive plan meeting at Elegant Occasions, um, at Butler Road and Highway ninety-two. That's going to be, um, uh, in District Four. So again, look out, go to our website, go to the comprehensive, uh, plan website and fill out your survey. Um, and then April is Autism Awareness and Acceptance Month. And so on April nineteenth, at Wilkes-笔 Mill Park, starting at eleven AM, it's the Fourth Annual Autism Fest in partnership with autism branches and our parks and recs department. So again, another unique and exciting, um, thing that's happening in our city. And people come from several, several counties around, even as far as Brazelton, to take part in this event. That is a very unique one in our city. So again, thank you all for listening and sign up for my newsletter, JC Sebastian at cityofsouthfulton.gov, if you're currently not getting it. Thank you. I yield.
Councilwoman Bell.
Thank you, M.P.C. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, this weekend, we are getting ready for our Full Court Community Day. That will be housed at Burdette Park, starting from eleven AM to two PM. So this is the time for any of, uh, members in our community to sign up for Ballin' with a Purpose. Um, sign up for one of our Ballin' with a Purpose teams, as well as sign up for our next session of Workforce Academy, which we provide free electrical vocational trades and training right in our city in District Five at Burdette Park. So please come out again on Saturday, March the twenty-second, from eleven AM to two PM. We will have some community, uh, resources out there, uh, Urban League of Greater Atlanta, mental health, job opportunities as well. So please join us again on Saturday from eleven to two, Full Court Community Day at Burdette Park. Again, a great opportunity to sign up if anyone is interested in Workforce Academy or being on one of our key teams for Ballin' with a Purpose. We are, um, continuing our initiative that started at the beginning of the year with health and wellness. We do have our newest Burdette Park Cardio and Fitness Studio that is open. However, thanks to all of our first responders, our Parks and Recreation Team, our fire department, and our lovely police department, we will be adding Fit for Duty classes, and they will begin on April the tenth at Burdette Park each and every week on a Thursday from six-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM. So we do encourage residents to come out all over the city. Once you get off work, change in your clothes, and come and get fit and fabulous with us at Burdette Park. So again, I want to thank all of our first responders, our police department, our, especially our Parks and Recreation Team, as well as our fire department, who will be helping us with the Fit for Duty classes. And again, it starts April the tenth, six-thirty PM to seven-thirty PM at Burdette Park. We are gearing up for our Second Annual Easter Egg Extravaganza and Community Resource Fair. Definitely different from just your typical Easter egg hunt. We want to make sure that we're providing community resources for all of our families, all of our, um, seniors, as well as children. So come on out on Saturday, April the nineteenth, from ten AM to two PM. It will be housed at Burdette Park at the Field. Um, last year, we had wonderful attendance, over three hundred people. Um, this year, we are anticipating more because we have added more. So in addition to our young, uh, children, our teenagers, and the adult Easter egg hunt, we are doing something special this year just for our seniors. A lot of seniors, we ran them over last year, so we are doing a special Easter egg hunt specifically for our seniors, and that is sponsored and will be sponsored by WellCare. So registration is open. You can actually go online to Eventbrite and sign up, you and your entire family, G.G., Grandma, Pa-Pa, everybody, and have them to come out on the nineteenth of April from ten AM to two PM at Burdette Park. And thanking my council, my colleagues in advance, Dr. Ral and Willis, for your contributions to help make this day a success. Um, we were all aware of the tragedy in our city, and so I want to take this time, um, and, and send my sincerest condolences to the nineteen owner, occupied, and renters from Camelot. Many of you heard about the building, Fire Building Nine caught on fire. And so, um, I just want to thank everybody that helped, our police department, our fire department. Exceptional work, so we appreciate you. Um, but Fulton County, because we've been, um, speaking with them regarding additional resources for those families that have been displaced, which is a major concern. I also want to take this time and say thank you to our chief, who's already left, um, our attorney, Kelly, as well as our city manager, Subedan. We have been working months on trying to develop a strategic plan to assist individuals in Camelot. So thank you for your participation, and everyone who has been involved, who have called and made donations, food items, clothing, um, whatever that you can do for those, those families, especially our seniors who were displaced in that building fire. And again, my last but not least, I want to take this time and say, um, honor my colleague Natasha Williams Brown, who was appointed to the Large Cities Council with National League of Cities last week. So again, we want to commend her, and again, that's it. I yield.
Councilwoman Williams Brown.
All righty then. So, let's take this from the top. First and foremost, I would like to congratulate, um, the students at Love T Nolan Elementary. As you know, we have, um, executed an MOU, um, here in District Six to adopt the school and provide additional support and wraparound services for the students there. And they placed third in the Fulton County Schools Olympiad. Um, in addition, the Love T Nolan third, fourth, and fifth grades passed all of their assessments in the Success Academy. So, uh, we're very, very proud of them, but also very grateful for all of the support, um, from the city, but also from you, the residents who have joined me. but also from you, the residents who have joined me in adopting the school and helping to help our babies um, succeed academically. Um, thank you to everyone who came out to the community bingo on Saturday. We had a beyond full house um, and have been informed by the Parks Director that we're gonna have to move into the gym because we are busting out at the seams. Um, but thank you to Parks and Rec staff, um, to Kaiser Permanente, who came and provided information and resources. Um, Tickle Me Pink, who is quickly becoming one of our preferred vendors in the District Six for their very delicious mocktails. Um, if you have not had them, they will be at the Back to School Carnival in July. They, they're very, very good. Um, as always, the Bissaras of Zeta Phi Beta Sordi Incorporated, Omicron Kappa Zeta Chapter, who always show up and show out. Um, Facts to Thrive, as well as Commissioner Arrington, who sent um, representatives from his office to provide information and resources as well. I think um, we are all trying to make sure that everybody gets their homestead exemption, as well as any other exemptions that they're in, that they may qualify for. We, so we thank him for coming um, with that information. Um, we want to announce and remind everybody that we have our monthly food distribution on Saturday at Creole Park, beginning at ten AM, until the food runs out. It's my, we are also beginning to grow that activity. And so the food is running out sooner and sooner. Um, we're up to, I think about twelve o'clock now, um, that we're starting to run out of food. So please, um, if you do know someone um, that is in need, or if you yourself are in need, we encourage you to please come early. Um, the longer you wait, the more likely it is we're gonna be out by the time you get there. Um, on March the twenty-ninth will be the community cleanup in, along with the District Six Recycle and Shred. Um, that activity, the recycle and shred, is going to take place in Creole Park. Um, for the community cleanup, we will be also meeting in Creole Park. But the intention is that we will be working um, along Creole Road and other locations throughout the city. Um, with residents who have adopted various roads throughout the city. And that initiative is being led by um, District Seven resident Jill Lindsay, um, who is with Go Green Communities. That is her, um, that is her baby. She is going to make sure that we keep Old National clean. Um, and she will, she's very diligent about reminding us that trash needs to be picked up. So please do come and support that. Um, recycle shred. Um, oh, I missed, we want to send happy birthday wishes to Ms. Phyllis Mentor. She is very, a very active resident here in the city of South Fulton. In addition to being a commercial realtor, she is on the Old National Merchants Association Board. She is on Old National District Board, and she is on the South Fulton Development Authority. So she definitely um, loves the city of South Fulton and puts her background in commercial real estate to great use for the benefit of all of us here in the city of South Fulton. And finally, I would like to return the favor and recognize my colleague, Councilwoman Kyo Shabell, who at National League of Cities was appointed to not one, but two councils. She is now on the Women in Municipal Government Council, as well as a member of the NBC Leo Council. And so we, Councilwoman Bell. A, as you can see, the women up here are hitting it out the park for Women's History Month. Madam Pro Ten, my you. Wait a minute, hold on. Did I, did I miss anything? Okay, Madam Pro Ten, my you.
Oh wait, J C's birthday? Did we wish J C a happy birthday?
Oh, we didn't wish J C a happy birthday. Councilwoman Sebastian, happy birthday. And many more. Okay, did I get it all this time? Got everything? I need a yes or no, something? Four, fourteen students got, that got inducted into the STEM Academy. At Love T Nolan. I'm telling you, y'all, just all the, just a little bit of support and a little bit of love goes a long way towards helping our students achieve. So very, very excited with the things that are happening at Love T Nolan. And now, Madam Mayor Pro Ten, my you. I'm pretty sure I do.
Okay, so um, next week, uh, March twenty-sixth, there will be a public information meeting about the roundabout that's going to come to Highway one thirty-eight, Jonesboro Road, um, and Besada Road, where there's currently a traffic light. So you'll find out all about that at Cornerstone Fellowship Church at thirty-three ten Besada Road in South Fulton. I also want to welcome a new business in District Seven, the Southern Smiles Family Dentistry, located at seven-three-six-five Old National Highway. It is a six thousand square foot facility. So if you're looking for a dentist, for your parents, your children, or yourself, uh, pop by, they're very friendly, uh, state-of-the-art equipment. I went and visited them today and was thoroughly impressed. Um, so uh, they could have put their business anywhere else, but they chose South Fulton, and they're very happy about it. I also want to congratulate our certified firefighters that graduated yesterday. Um, congratulations to them, a welcome addition to our staff. Um, they go out there every day. It, well, you know, our public safety individuals are who keeps everybody safe. So we appreciate that the family is growing. I also um, would like to wish a happy birthday to a gentleman named Wash Tubner Senior. He does not live in the city of South Fulton, but I met his daughter at the airport, and he has turned a hundred years old yesterday. So for an African-American man to turn a hundred years old, that is something to be rejoicing about. So happy birthday to you, Mr. Wa, Wash Tubner Senior. And last but not least, I want to give a special shout out to my special constituent, Ms. J C Mitchell, number five on the Creekside Varsity Girls High School Champions. Um, she's one of my special constituents, and I just uh, want to give a shout out to J C. Way to go. And with that, I yield, and Mr. Clerk, if you will sound the next item.
That brings us to the approval of City Council Meeting Minutes, City Council Regular Meeting Minutes, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, Work Session Minutes, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, and the Alcohol Zoning Public Hearing Minutes, February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve, I move to approve the minutes that sounded.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, can we take this vote in the portal?
Vote is over.
Oh, I gotta get out of that old one, get into the new one. Yeah, we supposed to be a right one. Okay, I'm coming, hold on.
Who?
You want to register, yes?
You want us to, yeah. Okay, here it is.
So that motion was approved unanimously, seven-zero.
Next item, Mr. Clerk. Councilwoman Ryle, please. Councilwoman uh, Williams Brown.
Okay. So that brings us to adoption of the council agenda. I do have, I did receive one item that needed to be added to the agenda. That's the approval, request approval of the appointment of Aaron Day as the District Six uh, appointee to the Veterans Advisory Board.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve, to adopt the agenda as amended.
Moved and properly seconded. Uh, can we take this vote in the portal?
Vote is over. That motion was approved unanimously, seven-zero.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Brings us to the consent agenda. Items A, B, and C.
I will entertain a motion.
Agenda.
Properly moved and seconded. Um, can we take that vote in the portal?
Motion was approved unanimously.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Brings us to alcohol license rezoning variance cases for motion and vote. The first is request council approval of a resolution, case M twenty-four dash zero-one-four and C V twenty-four dash zero-one-four, an application by Ms. Serat Properties LLC, care of Michael Corcoran, requesting a modification to petition two thousand seven Z dash zero-three-two to remove conditions one A, one B, two C, with an amended site plan to develop mixed-use multifamily building consisting of seventy-two apartments, three thousand five hundred and ninety-eight square feet of retail space, and restaurant space in the C one Old National Overlay District at twenty-two fifteen Jonesboro Road. Concurrent variance is from sections four oh five dot zero-one and four oh five dot zero-two to grade in the undisturbed buffer on the north and east side of the site, and to have landscape islands for every ten parking spaces rather than five. This is located in Council District Seven. Staff recommendation was approval.
I'll entertain a motion.
Um, I move to approve ca, resolution case M two-four dash zero-one-four, um, C V two-four dash zero-one-four, as sounded by the clerk.
Being properly moved with the second, is there any discussion? With um, no discussion, can we take the vote in the portal?
Motion wants to prove unanimously, seven-zero.
Next item.
Next item is item B, second read or request council approval of an ordinance case Z twenty-four dash zero-two-five and C V two, two-four dash zero-zero-nine, application by K M T Partners LLC, care of Greg Bowler, care of Morris Manning and Martin L L P, requesting a rezoning from A G one to M one on an assembly to parcels at Zero Roosevelt Highway to develop a one hundred and ninety-five thousand square foot light industrial warehouse distribution facility. The applicant also requests a concurrent variance from section four oh five point zero-one to reduce the rear buffer from one hundred feet to fifty feet. This is located in Council District Five. Staff recommendation is approval. Planning Commission recommends approval.
I will entertain a motion.
This is incorrect, um, clerk. They are not requesting to reduce the rear buffer.
So if that's, if that is the case, then would you move, then wouldn't her motion reflect everything but that? Is that correct, Attorney? Is that correct, Attorney Kelly? Or it, does it have to be consistent with the clerk's sound off?
It should be consistent with the clerk's sound off, but some of that would need to just be amended.
So she, does she have to move to amend?
So I move to amend the reduction to the rear buffer. I don't think they're asking for that anymore. They are not asking the client, the applicants in the back, they are not asking for a reduction to the buffer.
So we're, so with it being a, a motion to amend and properly seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing no discuss? Yes, Councilwoman Willis.
The item C, right?
B.
B. Okay.
There is no item C.
I get my agendas, okay. Oh, I don't, okay. So it was mentioned, I just want to correct. Um, in the public comments, there was uh, mention that this was heavy industrial. And I just want to correct what was stated by a resident, because I don't want misinformation out. Um, this reads that this is M one light industrial. Can you confirm or not, can, can you confirm um, att, attorney, planning director, uh, McClendon for the record? Because misinformation was stated during public comments, that this was heavy industrial. But clearly, in all the documents that I have read, and to include what is on this agenda, it states that this is light industrial. And then can you explain what light industrial is versus heavy industrial?
That's correct. The request is to rezone to M one, which is our light industrial zoning district. Um, I don't know if I can offer uh, an explanation off the top of my head for the difference between light and heavy industrial, other than uh, it is exactly as it sounds. Heavy industrial would be um, more of your heavy manufacturing uh, in industry, whereas light industrial um, would not include those more intense types of uses.
Will light industrial welcome heavy commercial trucks? Or would they commercial uh, uh, a different type of uh, truck?
Uh, I think um, any type of truck would be able to access um, a light industrial type of facility. Um, like, we do um, licensed distribution centers in light industrial. And so um, those, that would be your typical tractor trailer that you would see that hauls goods um, on the highways. So that would be allowed uh, in a, uh, at a light industrial facility.
No question, discussion. Um, one of the main bone of contentious that residents had was um, the traffic light. Uh, Ms. Subedan, I received documentation from the developer. The staff has been given pushback and has told G doc that they do not want additional traffic lights because of the maintenance requirement that is required of the city. Can you please clarify that for the record? Because that was putting to writing that G doc informed them that we have been telling um, them that we don't want additional traffic lights or traffic common, because it requires us to maintain them. And that was put in writing.
So we have been, I did ask for a copy of that email. Um, the recipient was not one of our employees on that email, contrary to what was originally thought. Uh, we've been in contact with G doc. We meet with them monthly. We correspond with them frequently. We have never turned down a seat, a streetlight because of a maintenance issue. It's completely the opposite. Now, it is true that G doc wants to turn over the maintenance of all G doc's streetlights to the city. Um, and that- to the city, um, and that I have pushed back on, because that needs to be accompanied by a check, cause those are on, um, state highways, so, but that is not the same thing of turning down a signal, we would never do that. So I have asked for the actual email to see who was on that correspondence, I don't even recognize the name of that particular planner, who was on that email is not somebody we work with directly, um, I work with Paul Denard, and he can tell you from his mouth, we're only, we're only ever looking for more, nevertheless.
Thank you for clarifying that, so do we have this as a condition? Are you gonna read the conditions?
We're, so, we're dis- we're in a, in the discussion to carry the amendment, and Councilman Sebastian is next in the queue.
Oh, I hadn't yielded though.
No, no, I just stated that.
Thank you, so that was my question, do you answer, do you answer, is that a condition? Is that going to be a condition?
It's here.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sebastian.
Actually, that was gonna be my question, this document is what we have voted, just to make sure, okay? All right, thank you.
Any additional questions? So, can we take this vote in the queue?
That mo- that motion was approved unanimously, seven zero.
The amendment.
The amendment to remove the, this, the lights, the buffer, correct.
And at this time, I'll accept a motion. Mr. Clerk?
I motion to approve with conditions and the following conditions, applicant shall make a one-time contribution to the City of South Fulton in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars towards the installation of a traffic signal per the signal warrant and analysis dated February the twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and submitted by the applicant. Said contribution shall be made prior, said contribution shall be made prior to the issuance of a building permit. Said contribution shall only be accepted in accordance with an approved memorandum of understanding or other acceptable legal document between the City of South Fulton and the Georgia Department of Transportation for the use of the funds. If such an agreement is not reached within two years of the issuance of a valid land disturbance permit, this condition is eligible to be waived. Condition number two, developer agrees to install additional trees adjacent to Roosevelt Highway to increase buffering and screening over and above the existing vegetation that will remain. A landscap- a landscaping plan showing the additional screening must be provided prior to the issuance of a land disturbance permit as approved by the city arborist.
Okay, so, who would like to be recognized? Councilwoman Willis?
I, I would like to make a substitute motion, um, because this does impact, um, my district, I do not like the language, um, that, um, within two years of issuance of valid disturbance, the condition is eligible to waive, and here is why, because it takes over two years for anything to be done by G dot, I mean, we still waiting on roundabouts on Highway ninety-two, and as a result of that, we had to go in and put in traffic lights, that took us about three years to get, so I would like that condition, um, this condition is eligible to be, two years of issuance of valid disturbance permit, that, I would like that language to be removed out.
Okay, is, properly moved with a second, is there discussion? Uh, Councilman Sebastian. That's old, Councilwoman Brown, that's old too, they got it, y'all got it, no discussion. Councilwoman Williams Brown.
Um, parliamentary inquiry. I heard a motion, I never heard a second, and then I heard, uh, discussion, and then I heard a substitute motion, but I never heard a second to the first motion. It was second, okay.
Okay, so, properly moved, many seconds, and, um, can we take this, uh, well, no more discussion? Okay, um, I have something I would like to say, so I will acknowledge myself. I will say this for the record, because, um, I just wanna make sure that our citizens understand that this is, the job that we do involves, um, hearing these types of cases, and I know that there were some community meetings, um, well, what, how, how many ever meetings there were, I believe, in my opinion, it was an effort to address the concerns that the citizens had, and I think it was very gracious of the councilperson, um, and the developer to take the time and extraordinary effort, uh, to address these concerns. I was not at any of those, I was not at the last meeting, I think that I was on one of the virtual meetings just in observance, but not in participation, and, um, I believe that I heard that there were things said that would give people the impression that councilpersons had conversations with developers. I'm speaking for myself, and I will be very clear, in the course of what we do, we talk to everybody about everything, and there is nothing wrong with that, that is how you have transparency, clarity, participation, clear understanding, I like, I'm in the legal field, and I like firsthand knowledge of things when they have something to do with me, however, there were, I was invited to have further discussions or, you know, get further clarification on things that I did not need, because for me, the way that I deal with these cases is facts, I read the paper, I get the information, and one of the most important set of facts that I receive comes from the recommendation from the planning commission. So I just want citizens to understand that when the planning, I mean, not the planning commission, the planning commission and the staff, our staff, our staff recommendation is paramount, it is an entire packet with a lot of information, we really do read it, we really do go through it, we do really understand what we're reading, and when they give a recommendation, um, to approve, then we do what is legally sound. Over the last month, we attended three classes on zoning, that was something that I pushed for, the mayor pushed for, it was very helpful to all of us, we learnt a lot, we discovered what we didn't know, and, um, in saying all that, we take this seriously, this is not emotional, this is not about what we like or what we don't like, it's about an allowable land use, a legal land use, so in saying that, I'm just trying to clear things up, because you could email me if you want, I'll respond, you know, I respect everyone's opinion, I respect everyone's voice, but I will not be slandered, I will not be accused, and I'm gonna be extremely clear and serious about that, because I take this very seriously, um, just because you may not like some of the decisions that we make, or you may not agree with them, and you may not also have the, you, you may not have the facts to put in context to what you heard, but we're doing our jobs, and when we take this vote, what we doing, what we're doing is doing our jobs, and nothing else. So in saying that, I will yield, and Councilwoman Willis will be acknowledged.
I wanna thank, I'm April Tim, I forgot about that, um, for acknowledging, um, for, for bringing that up, um, because it is germane, because it was in reference to, uh, one of the planning commissioners accusing several individuals, um, on this body of meeting with this developer inappropriately taking back door, making backdoor deals for over a year, um, and I'm gonna speak to my interaction with this developer. This developer has not been meeting with me for over a year, this developer has met with me in all appropriate in legal settings, um, and mainly with staff, this developer has invited me to their development meetings, and one, I was very upset, because I don't think it was proper notices sent out, and people were caught off guard, but they did correct that by working with, uh, Councilmember Bell and myself, and they organized and spent more money and sent out notices to have another meetings at Waltham Mall Park, in which Councilmember Bell and I conducted ourselves appropriately, we sat in the back of the room and let them conduct their meeting, and staff was attendance, in attendance at that meeting as well. This th- third conversation that took place, I knew nothing about, wasn't invited to, and the planning, um, commissioner should not have been, per the training that we took for three weeks, should not have, should not have been a participant in that meeting, period, because what was advised to us in training that everybody needs to stay in their lane, and when we have active zoning cases, planning commissioners should not be out conducting town halls, should not be speaking on active cases, should not be posting on active cases, um, if we have any questions of how we should conduct ourselves in reference to developers, I typically reach out to our city attorney, um, again, most of the time when I meet with developers concerning an active zoning case, it is with staff, our recommendations come from staff, just like the recommendations come from staff when it comes to the planning commission, we are a separate governing body with separate rules and bylaws, and, um, the notion or the allegation by anyone that I have been taking back door, making backdoor deals, meeting with developers inappropriately, and meeting with this in particular developer for over a year is simply a lie, and so, um, I heard the concerns of residents, we hopefully addressed the concerns of residents through these conditions, um, the recommendation came from the planning commission as approval, and, um, from staff as approval in accordance to our zoning laws and our comprehensive development land use plan, and today, when residents had an opportunity to come and speak up, we heard from one resident, that's it, we got one email from residents, that's it, the last meeting, a lot of residents showed up, from my understanding, another meeting was had after that meeting this week, which I was not invited to, and that's okay, but today, I don't see anybody, I didn't get anything but one email, I got a page of conditions, and the only issue I had was given a two-year window for a traffic light, which in my opinion was not feasible, so that language has been removed, so for me, and as the District Three representative, as always, I govern myself, um, accordingly, and I hear and try to legally address the concerns of my constituents, so I would appreciate if the accusatory emails, you know, not be sent by a planning commissioner who was appointed and approved by this body, cause we all took training, and we should know now how to govern ourselves accordingly and with decency and order and legally, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim, I yield.
Amen. Is there anyone else, uh, Mr. Clerk, can we see the queue, or is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, with that, um, Mr. Clerk, if you, we can take this vote in the queue, on the portal. Oh, he ready. But y'all said it.
Okay, that motion was approved unanimously, approval with conditions as stated.
Next item, Mr. Clerk? Councilman Ra- I mean, Willis?
That brings us to the agenda items for tonight's meeting. First, under procurement and contracts, number one, the General Services Department is seeking council approval for a three-year single-source contract with Atlanta Office Liquidators Incorporated, starting October one, two thousand twenty-three, and ending September thirty of two thousand twenty-six, with the option for two one-year renewals. The contract covers the purchase of office furniture, breakroom furniture, reception area furnishings, and accessories for the City of South Fulton's facilities, total amount for each one-year term should not exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I will entertain a motion.
I, I move, um, approval of a-
Councilwoman Williams Brown.
So we do need to amend, um, this item as stated, um, there needs to be a ratification of the previous purchase orders, and then it'd be an approval of the contract effective today moving forward.
Okay, I move to ratify the previous purchases, and that we approve a three-year single-source contract with Atlanta Office Liquidators, um, with the option for two one-year renewals, the total amount for each one-year term shall not exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. As well, I also move the approval of a single-source contract with Fast Signs for a three-year, the ratification of previous purchases and approval of a single-source contract with Fast Signs for a three-year term to include two optional one-year renewals, and with a maximum allowable amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for each one-year term.
Properly moved and second, second, uh, is there any discussion? With no discussion, Mr. Clerk will take that vote in the portal.
Okay, that motion was approved unanimously, both item A one and A two.
Next item, Mr. Clerk?
That brings us to item B under administration, first is request council approval of a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five strategic plan.
I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the res- uh, resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-five strategic plan, as well as approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter Nine to modify and adopt provisions pertaining to the disposition of surplus city property and minor electronics, as well as a resolution approving the acquisition of real property in, yet, Union Road and Wallace Road in the amount of six hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
Second, properly moved with the second, is there any discussion? Being no discussion, can we take this vote in the portal? Being no discussion, can we take this vote in the portal?
That motion was approved unanimously, seven zero, items B one, two, and three.
Next item.
Brings us to, well, we have one add-on item that was added earlier. It's the appointment of Mr. Aaron Day to the, uh, it's the District Six appointee to the Veterans Advisory Board.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move approval of Aaron Day to the Veterans Advisory Board.
Second, properly moved with the second, is there any discussion? Can we take this vote by show of hands? Next item, Mr. Clerk?
Question if necessary.
Uh-uh.
I ent- I will entertain a motion.
I move to adjourn.
Properly moved with the second, any discussion? Uh, show of hands, show of hands. Oh, oh, excuse me. Uh, Mr. Sebastian has discussion. My apologies.
Before we adjourn, I wanna thank you all for singing for me. I don't think I've ever had a group of women in a public meeting sing for me before, so I really appreciate you all. Thank you all. And with that, I close.
And with that, show of hands. Bye-bye. Thank you.
We are adjourned. It was unanimous. We adjourned at nine twenty-nine PM.